Good evening. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Harrisburg City School District. And at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Terman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We can all please stand.
Good evening. I would like to announce that the School Board and Receiver met in executive session prior to the Committee of the Whole Meeting at five o'clock PM this evening to discuss personnel matters. At this time, Madam Secretary, would you please call the role?
Thank you, Dr. Suski.
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Copeland.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Radcliffe. Ms. Robinson. Mr. Roy.
Here.
Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson Leader.
Here.
And Dr. Suski.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Are there any public comments this evening? Dr. Suski, there are no public comments. Please note that the Board Policy nine oh three can be found on our district website for reference. And that ends the Public Comments Department. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. I would like to turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Mr. Terman, who will be assisting with the presentations of information for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Suski. We are going to now go to new business or receiver approval for the twenty-third meeting. The first office will be the Office of Academics. Before we get started and to give you some background on some of the agenda items, we have two informational sections we are going to do. One will be an update on extended learning opportunities, and that will be by Danielle Kersey, who will give us a quick update on the extended learning opportunities in the district.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me back, and I am so excited that it's all over and we survived, and it was absolutely incredible. This summer, we actually had the opportunity to have five different programs that were running in two different sessions. We had our Super Readers Camp for grades one to four. They were hosted at Downey Elementary, Foose Elementary, and Melrose. At that time, we had Site Directors Alyssa Jett, Douglas Kishbach, and Donald Albin. They were absolutely fabulous. During that time, we served over a hundred and seventy students. There was a lot that were registered. Our staff did such an incredible job reaching out and getting more students involved than for session two as well. For our Wonders Camp at grades five to eight, and our Richmond Camp for grades nine to twelve, they were at, Ms. Cynthia Spencer was our Site Director. We had, sorry, eight teachers at Marshall Math Science Academy and three teachers at John Harris during that time. Oh, we served over seventy students. For Credit Recovery for grades ten to twelve, we served students from John Harris, SciTech, and Doffin County, but Votech. Our Site Director Miranda Crisak just did an absolutely fabulous job. We had over a hundred students served. We had over a hundred and fifty credits earned. And on June twenty-ninth, we had seven summer graduates. We also provided a virtual math remediation for grades five to eight. That was, the teacher was Brandy Perkovich, and she used our Imagine Math online system. And currently, right now, we are in the process of Summer Bridge occurring at John Harris. And next week will be Marshall Math Science Academy and SciTech. So just real quick updates about some staff feedback. I did a survey from our staff after session one and after session two. The, the feedback was absolutely incredible. Material, their teachers strongly agreed for majority that all materials were provided, curriculum resources were there. The professional development they attended was beneficial. A lot of them are excited for next school year. They're already ready to prepare to teach at our after-school programs and then also to participate again for next summer. They also felt incredibly supported by each of the site administrators and then with indirect supervision from me as well. So those were just some pictures. I thought you would like to see some of our students in action. So just so you know, a lot of our teachers right now are actually going through the station rotation training. And so this summer, we actually previewed that with a lot of our grade one to four teachers, and they utilized the station rotation model as they went through their teaching for the summer. So that was their schedule. High student engagement, we had, they had morning meeting every day. We actually hosted those family lunch engagements I talked about weekly. The students left with a book, and they were very, very highly attended by our parents. This was our Wonders Camp and our Richmond Camp, just so we actually hosted two Passion Project Fairs throughout the time to watch what our students created, being able to utilize their time and really focus on their self-directed passion projects and personalized learning. It was an adventure for all. It was something new for our teachers, and it was something new for our students. So is just some of the pictures up there. One shout out to the girl right there in the, the middle. She actually made it for sure that supports English language learners in English and in Spanish. So anytime that we have a new student arrive at our school, we were able to help them with different language and helping the teacher and the student be able to communicate more effectively. That is actually something that I would like to have reproduced and shared at all of our elementary schools and high schools and middle, sorry. Just looking through there, you can't really capture completely what they had done, but a lot of the students did anything. What they had to do is figure out what they were passionate about. Research it, dissect it. They had a blog every single day talking about what they did before middle and end during their project. They had to then make sure that their project transferred to an authentic audience, and it had to serve a purpose. So therefore, our one student that, you know, was really passionate about coding, and he coded a Sonic game. So not only did he could teach himself how to code a Sonic game, he also made a tutorial so other kids could learn from him. There's just one of our students, I'm trying to see on there, so many different things. You can see there, there is a Penbrook detective that joined us. One of our students researched the police in our neighboring areas and really wanted to give back. She made thank you baskets after realizing all the amazing things they had done to keep her safe. So really, everything that they did was learning. And actually, everything is standards-based and includes research, oral speaking at the Passion Project Fairs. A lot of our administrative team and teachers came and visited, and our students had to give oral presentations as well. Credit Recovery, absolutely incredible. Miranda Crisak was the site supervisor. That was just some of the feedback that the teachers had given in recognition of Miranda and what a wonderful job she had done. We also had a virtual math remediation, and Brandy Perkovich went through that because it was online. Everything was structured. And there was specific teacher-student visitation throughout the entire program. So next school year coming in, so looking at everything, there will be trying to break it up into two different sessions. And that was just kind of a breakdown of where my head is at right now, looking through our school calendar, vacation days. So that is kind of up in the air right now, but that is kind of where my head is at, thinking about how we will run next school year. You can skip all that. So basically, again, we are going to have the Super Power Hour for grades K to two. That's going to be hosted Monday through, Monday through Thursday from four-ten to five-ten. I have already been in conversation with transportation, and transportation will be set up for all of our scholars to attend. We, Dr. Sneeve had helped me with a breakdown of how many teachers we will need and how many students we will be able to serve during this time. This is the only one that there is entrance criteria. This will be servicing our students at any, that fall below the fortieth percentile on our benchmark assessments. It's going to be direct and strategic intervention for what our students really need in K to two. We've also formed a partnership with the Girl Scouts of Central Pennsylvania, and they actually will be serving all of our students K to five in every single elementary school. We also have intermediate enrichment for grades three through five. That'll again will be Monday through Thursday, four-ten to five-ten. During throughout this time, we are looking to continue the individualized passion projects and the personalized learning for our students. But within that, I've also made partnerships again with the Girl Scouts of America, Girls on the Run, and our goal is to have girls on the run in every single elementary school next year, and also Lemonade Day. So Lemonade, Lemonade Day is a curriculum that is actually going to be given to us from the Department of Education. Finally, there's also an intermediate enrichment. It's basically the same thing that three to five will be, a little bit more differentiated and obviously more accelerated. I've also just finished a partnership with the New Vision Step Team, and they will be participating and supporting at both of our middle schools. For grades six through eight and nine to twelve, there is going to be an academic lab. At this time, we have what we want in place tentatively for these students, but my goal is truly to survey the parents and the teachers to see what our students need. So therefore, when we start hiring for these positions, it'll be able to be a true lab and truly what our students need to serve them. And that's it at this time. Hopefully, more to come very soon. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kersey.
Is there any questions?
Do you have any questions for Dr. Kersey?
I, I have a question. Just how did the relationship with, or the partnership with girls, with the Girl Scouts come about? That's, that's really wise.
Um, so with, I'm trying to think. It's, I feel like we started really in the beginning when I first started. I had received an email, and we had a meeting, and they were trying to start a camp. They wanted students at Harrisburg to attend a camp, a summer-long camp. With Girl Scouts not being intertwined into our schools, we didn't think we'd actually get the participation from our families to allow our students to get in the bus, travel an hour away, stay there for eight hours, and travel back. So I've been working really closely with Latricia Everly, and we tried to come up with a plan to figure out how we can truly get our students involved and invested. As we start, I have made sure that they have staffing, at least two staff members for every single rotation in our elementary schools, and then from there, we're going to be opening it up to the parents to also get their involvement and to start a troop outside of the school entity. So that is truly where that came from, and our goal now is that after we build this partnership throughout the rest of the year, that this summer, we can This is the only one that there is, um, entrance criteria. This will be servicing our students at any, that fall below the fortieth percentile on our benchmark assessments. It's going to be direct and strategic intervention for what our students really need in K to two. We've also formed a partnership with the Girl Scouts, um, of Central Pennsylvania. And they actually will be serving all of our students K to five in every single elementary school. We also have intermediate enrichment for grades three through five. That'll again, will be Monday through Thursday, four-ten to five-ten. During, throughout this time, we are looking to continue the, um, individualized passion projects and the personalized learning for our students. But within that, I've also made partnerships again with the Girl Scouts of America, Girls on the Run, and our goal is to have girls on the run in every single elementary school next year. And also Lemonade Day. So Lemonade, Lemonade Day is a curriculum that, um, is actually going to be given to us from the Department of Education. Finally, um, there's also an, an intermediate enrichment is basically the same thing that three to five will be. A little bit more differentiated and obviously more accelerated. Um, I've also just finished a partnership with the New Vision Step Team and they will be participating and supporting at both of our middle schools. For grades six through eight and nine to twelve, there is going to be an academic lab. At this time, we have what we want in place tentatively for these students, but my goal is truly to survey the parents and the teachers to see what our students need. So therefore, when we start hiring for these positions, it'll be able to be a true lab and truly what our students need to serve them. And that's it at this time. Hopefully more to come very soon. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kersey.
Is there any questions?
Do you have any questions for Dr. Kersey?
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Just how did the relationship with, or the partnership with girls, with the Girl Scouts come about? That's, that's really wise.
Um, so what, with, I'm trying to think. It's, I feel like we started really in the beginning when I first started. Um, I had, uh, received an email and we had a meeting and they were trying to start a camp. They wanted students at Harrisburg to attend a camp, a summer-long camp. With Girl Scouts not being intertwined into our schools, we didn't think we'd actually get the participation from our families to allow our students to get in the bus, travel an hour away, stay there for eight hours and travel back. So I've been working really closely with Latricia Everly. And we tried to come up with a plan to figure out how we can truly get our students involved and invested. As we start, um, I have made sure that they have staffing, at least two staff members for every single uh, rotation in our elementary schools. And then from there, we're going to be opening it up to the parents to also get their involvement and to start a troop outside of the school entity. Um, so that is truly where that came from. And our goal now is that after we build this partnership throughout the rest of the year, that this summer, we can offer that summer camp to the students.
Is it possible to build that same partnership with, uh, Boy Scouts as well, Girl Scouts?
That if you have a contact for the Boy Scouts, that would be phenomenal. I will, I will search that out, but definitely. I know, as I was going through everything, I'm like, I got Girls on the Run and Girl Scouts of America, but I need something separate for our gentlemen as well. I definitely agree.
Any other questions for Dr. Kersey? Thank you, Dr. Kersey. Right, next I would like to bring up Mrs. Slaughter. Uh, she is going to get some information about the change in schedule for Rowan Academy.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here to share an update with the master schedule for Rowan Academy going into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So as you may recall, back in the spring, Rowan Academy went to an abbreviated schedule due to approximately twenty-five percent reduction in instructional staff. In order for us to continue to maintain continuity of instruction as well as, uh, address safety concerns, we went to an abbreviated schedule with the amount of staff that we still had retained at Rowan Academy. So throughout the spring and well into the summer, those continued efforts to fill those instructional gaps have not gotten us where we wanted. So after a number of reiterations, we, um, landed on going back with our abbreviated schedule starting the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I do have it up here. I just want to share with you a couple of the things that may be a little bit different from the spring. But overall, it's the same. So our families and our scholars will be used to the schedule that they ended the school year with. So across all, at e- every grade level, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, there will be a total of six home loan classes that will travel together face-to-face daily for six core subject areas. So it was very important for us that we ensured that they had all four, uh, core subject areas, math, science, social studies and, um, English language arts, as well as implement math intervention and reading intervention to support where we are with our struggling readers and where our scholars are with, um, needing to improve scores. So what you'll see there, um, in the middle, across the, each, each grade level is forty-five minute periods across the day. Um, within the, the middle of the day, there's a ten-minute window. You see that green strip there? That's a ten-minute window. That's not actually lunch where they are sitting in the cafeteria. This is very similar to what we did in the spring where scholars were able to grab and go their lunch and back to the classroom where they still continue in instructional activities. This allowed for us to continue with our instructional minutes and so that we can make that time, um, frame for, uh, the guidelines of PDE. A little thing that's different there, you'll see a forty-five minute period at the end of the day. Um, we dismissed last year at two oh seven. So that's been shifted back about ten, ten minutes or so to have a forty-five minute, uh, period for transition. So scholars are able to walk home or catch the bus home and they will have their last core or last, um, of a, last course asynchronously at home, which is humanities. This is an area that we've really struggled to get staffed there and that is for physical education, um, multimedia, as well as our, um, music and art classes where we're still struggling to find teachers to support these courses. So scholars will start the year doing these classes at home asynchronously, which will be a combination of project-based learning, uh, paper pencil, where we'll be able to guide them before dismissal on their way home and some pieces that may be, uh, done virtually or online. Uh, our goal is to continuously evaluate where we are with our instructional staff and our hopes is that we can start a more, um, traditional schedule by second marking period. Uh, also, as we begin to bring humanities teachers on, online, they'll continue to support that asynchronous instruction at home, but we'll also look at engaging them with scholars throughout the school day at various times.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Slaughter. Uh, just one quick note, and, uh, Mrs. Slaughter is not, uh, aware of this yet, is. Uh, we did get a little bit of feedback, uh, from PDE today and there's only one thing that we're going to have to, uh, make sure we have some discussion on. And that's looking at the humanities period at the end of the day and what exactly we're going to have the students complete. So, uh, we'll have some discussions within the next week. Come up with a game plan and then we come back for the twenty-third. Uh, Mrs. Slaughter and, uh, the Office of Academics and myself, we definitely have a plan of attack for what the students will do, uh, when they get home for that last asynchronous period. Um, other than that, um, I would like to applaud, uh, Mrs. Slaughter and her team and also the Office of Academics and really coming up with a plan that we could have students in school every day. Um, we had about four schedules that we were going through. Um, majority of those schedules did not have students in school every day, but after continuous work and really looking and shifting things, um, the team was able to come up with a schedule now where scholars could come to school every day. Um, and it was basically just a continuation of what they finished last school year. Um, and we were going to be very aggressive in our approach to really come up with solutions for the students at Rowan. Um, to see if we can get back to a normal schedule for them for the beginning of the second marking period. Any questions for Mrs. Slaughter?
Also forgot to mention that we will be having a town hall for our families next Wednesday. Uh, a live town hall at two PM at Rowan Academy. And again, at six PM virtually through a webinar, just to share this information and address any parent concerns, uh, about the schedule going into the school year.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Oh, hold on a minute.
How frequently will those, uh, town hall meetings be?
So we're hoping to continue. Last year, we did, uh, happy hour, hour once a month for families to engage with the administrative team at Rowan Academy. That was once every month. We did them at different times throughout the year. So we're hoping to continue to, to do that this school year as well. So typically, you're looking at once a month for family, family engagement.
Any other questions for Mrs. Slaughter?
Yes. Actually, just, I'm sorry. Just not a question, but just, um, um, an appreciation. We, we understand that this is not an ideal situation for our students, but, um, and our teachers are overloaded and this is not just an isolated, um, situation at Rowan. This is a national
Yes.
issue. It's just that in our district, Rowan has been hit extremely hard. Um, but I just wanted to say thank you for what you were doing and the, um, the teachers being flexible with the scheduling and just being there for our students. So just, I appreciate the hard work that, that you guys have put in to make sure our students are in school every day, getting their, their core education. So it's appreciated.
Thank you. Well, Rowan stands for resiliency. So they definitely are that and, um, definitely wanted to ensure that our scholars could have the most credible, um, teachers in front of them, unlike some other states that have are, are going for veterans and different things like that to come in and instruct scholars. So we're appreciative of that. Thank you.
I appreciate, uh, innovative thinking that you and the staff went into to solve a problem. Difficulty that this presented. My only question is, I see that this is a progress. This would be work in progress.
Correct.
But so far, how's that working out?
Um, actually, it, it is a work in progress. And so our theme this year will be keep on rolling and that is, uh, pun intended. Um, but we have been able to make recommendations for some of the instructional staff where we have some gaps and we're hoping to continue to fill that all the way up until the start of school and even continuing. So the schedule that we have now is putting our very best, um, that we have in front of our scholars as we continue to get highly qualified teachers in, into the building. So it's, it's, it's slim, but it's, it's getting there. We, we don't just want to fill positions. I will tell you that. So even though we are aiming to start by second semester, we aren't just going to put bodies in front of scholars.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Another thing with, uh, the shortage that you guys have, um, what is the process for anyone that is willing to come in a volunteer? Will we reach out? They do or how does that work?
Thank you for that question. Um, we are in the process of hiring a new family engagement specialist. One of the advantages that we have going into the new school year is having a full-time family engagement specialist. And once that person is brought on board, uh, any volunteers will be able to reach out to them. But in the interim, they can reach out to Rowan Academy, our, um, school secretary. Her name is Keisha Moyer, or they may reach out to me, Portia Slaughter, via email. Or they can call the school, seven one seven, seven zero three, forty-five hundred.
Thank you so much. I know. I definitely appreciate you. Thank you.
And the last thing, as, as Mrs. Slaughter sits down, is, uh, just very much an appreciation for, uh, we had an opportunity to meet with her staff last week. Um, all of her staff came in to talk to her, talk to them about their different assignments and it was very much a team approach. Um, as hard as and difficult it has been for the past six, seven months, um, as she met with them and talked to her staff, everybody was just all in, whatever we need to do to move the building forward. So, uh, just a very big thank you to the entire, tire staff at Rowan. All right, at this time, I'm going to now turn the rest of this portion over to Dr. Sneeve. Dr. Sneeve, please feel free to bring anyone up to the microphone to give any background on your agenda items for this month.
I will do that. Good evening, everyone. Um, the first person I'd like to come up is Ms. Kathy Austin, who leads our L's team. Um, under professional development, we would like to send six L teachers to the WIDA Conference, which is the annual con- conference of twenty-twenty-two. Um, this is at two hundred ninety-five dollars per person and this would be funded through Title III. And additionally, we would like to send two people to the Refugee Education Summit. Um, the title of the summit is creating belonging in the school. This is to be held at the end of September. Uh, for Ms. Austin, the cost would be four thirty-seven fifty. Paid for through Title III. And for Ms. Stephanie Port, Port Real, um, her amount would be five hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents to attend the conference for one additional day. Any questions about the WIDA Conference coming up or our refugees in the school district? Um, Kathy is here to answer those for you.
Actually, I
Hey, more so a question, but I want to thank you for offering these opportunities for our teachers to take advantage of.
Just a, a quick question. The Refugee Education Summit, could you explain it to us how that all works together with our, um, ELL, that part of the education?
So, um, we currently have over eighty refugees, um, in our district who are classified through the Department of Human Services that they're refugee designated. And so we, um, receive additional monies called the Refugee School Impact Grant, um, that allows us to do other programs and services for them. And since we've had such an influx of refugees over the past couple of years, PD has decided to now put together some type of summit or professional learning for school districts and other community agencies that work with refugees and their families. So this is the first year for that particular summit.
So when this is, um, when this is done, would you be able to, to come back and maybe present something to us for the rest of the district?
Most definitely. I would love to come and talk to you about our refugee students. We actually, this summer, um, held a summer camp for twenty-eight, um, refugee kids and families. Um, it was the afternoon of the morning sessions that were academics. Um, at our audit through, uh, PDE, we were given exemplary, um, feedback on all of the conditions and criterias that we met. Um, in fact, um, Stephanie, I will be on a panel, if approved, to attend the summit to actually speak about our program as a model program for the state.
And not just getting the information just for this program, but just spreading it across the district? So just an education for the entire district, but?
Right. And I can also share with you, um, something else that, um, we created for teachers and staff in the district. It's a pamphlet on just the refugee experience, but it also has like resources and other things for, for refugee families to reach out to them, knowing that some of them are coming with just a bag on their back. Um, they're dealing with several things of trauma. And one of the, um, unique things with our families that we have here in Harrisburg, they're very large families. So there are seven and eight, sometimes nine kids in each family. So they span elementary, middle and high school. And just kind of having one place where they can kind of understand like, okay, this is where, when elementary school starts and this is when middle school starts and all the different times that they get out and they had to navigate, um, the city of Harrisburg and all the other community agencies that are out there. And also understanding American school system. So thank you, Ms. Robinson.
I have a question. Um, first off, that's amazing, the work you guys are doing. Um, with respect to understanding like Harrisburg and Harrisburg School District, is there a collaborative approach with the city with helping the families that are in the community or are we just doing this or how, what that will like?
So the, the partnerships or the collaborations that we have are with the Refugee Resettlement Agencies, which would be Catholic Charities, Jewish Federation, International Service Center. And then, um, Church World Services has a satellite, um, it's entity that they brought up to Harrisburg just because of the number of Afghan refugees that we're getting in. So when a new, uh, refugee family is settled in the city limits of Harrisburg, those different entities will contact my office so that we can streamline registering for school. Getting over to Hamilton Health Center of the Department of Ed to get their, their shots. And they needed additional shots from when they actually came into the country. Um, the other thing that we'll do is we'll, um, get them hooked up with Hamilton Health Center so that they can get medical, like, to get a doctor. Because many of the, um, families do, especially some of our Afghan families, um, had very serious medical issues and just, you know, they come to the school and it's like, we don't, what, what, how, how can we help you? We need to get you over to a medical provider first and then be able to. There's different partnerships. Um, Stephanie Portarreal, my family engagement specialist, kind of takes the lead on that. Um, and she works with our, uh, current social workers in the district to do home visits and, you know, get, navigate families who live uptown, how to ride the bus to get off on Seventeenth Street to go to Hamilton Health Center or get our families enrolled in WICs and stuff like that. So it's really, uh, it's kind of like a continuity of care entity. So if you don't speak English and you fall into the category, probably going to cross my path and I'm going to tell you what, what all services we have. So thank you. Yes, sir.
I, I really appreciate the challenge, you know, because it's, it's not Afghani, you know what I mean? There you go, south of the border. We have Guatemalans. And, and the challenge must be tremendous.
So right now, our current refugees come from Afghanistan, Tanzania, Guatemala, Honduras and Sudan.
Yes, and this, the language barrier of my hats off to you. You spoke the good word.
Thank you.
Have you, uh, granted to any problems with giving?
No, I mean, we're pretty good as far as like working with central reg, um, letting the, a lot of the families have what are considered advocate through the resettlement agency. So when we, the settlement agency contacts and say, okay, we have a new family coming in, here's their advocate. Um, what we'll do is we'll reach out to the advocate and say, okay, here are all the things that we're going to need for registration. Um, if you want to do it online, we can do it online with you. If you want to make an appointment and come in, um, we can make sure that the, uh, registrar at that time has access to the language application translating services that we have. So they're able to communicate with the family in the language that they prefer. So yeah.
I would like to say thank you, a special thank you to Kathy for her leadership, not only with our refugee families, but all of our L families. How many L students do we have coming into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
As of today, we have one thousand three hundred and eighty-five with a potential of sixty-two more that need to be tested to possibly be considered an L. So we're looking at fourteen hundred.
Quite a few, quite a few of our student population. So thank you so much for you and your team. You're going to come back up in a little bit. Thank you. All right, the next, um, recommendation for approvals, they're going to be coming from me. Um, they recommend, I recommend approval for professional development. Provided by McGraw-Hill for all of our new teachers. As you know, we are hiring new teachers continuously and we want to make sure and we want to make sure that our new teachers are as up to date on the materials that we're using and the literacy strategies that are in place. So we um will be providing that to all of our newly hired teachers um at the K five level. That's in the amount of thirty five hundred dollars, and that will be funded through Title One. Secondly, um I would like approval to, um I would love the approval to work with Kelly, Sarah Kelly Education Services. Sarah Kelly is a data specialist who's in um a sole consultant who specializes in mathematics and mathematics strategies. Both Foose and Scott Elementary Schools are ATSI designated schools, and part of their ATSI plan and part of their ATSI funding will go to support work with Sarah Kelly as a consultant for their teachers in mathematical thinking, mathematical strategies. So I'll just keep going. Okay, I'll keep going. Um and then the next one, I'd like to invite Rhonda Eckenroth up to the podium. This is to approve a contract with another educational consultant who has worked for the district for many years. His name is Andy Duses, Educational Consultants, and he is the plan is that he works with Downey Elementary School as part of their CSI plan.
Hi, good evening. So um Mr. Duses works uh with our school on our particularly on our climate and culture goals um through our CSI plan. Um it started out, he worked with six um willing teachers who wanted to grow um and quickly ended up working with most of our staff. Um and then took on the new teachers, and this year we have eleven new teachers coming to Downey, which is um about two thirds of our um primary grades will um be new teachers this year. So that will be a primary focus. Uh he works on classroom management, um working with challenging students, teacher language, um a lot of positioning and um really important things to keep students safe and engaged in learning. Um so uh he'll be, he's um with us ta- uh twenty days live. Um and then he's available um to our teachers pretty much twenty four seven. Um I know he does um consultation with teachers pretty much seven days a week. He obviously has other schools, but um and then we also have access to his online platform through this um um which is free to us because we we contract out twenty days, um which has micro lessons, which has been really beneficial um for us to use during our PLCs. While he's here, he also does PLCs um with cohorts of teachers. Um he works with our parent educators, our safety monitors, um have had sessions with him and have provided feedback that they wanted more sessions with him. Um we held a teacher academy uh this past summer, and we plan to hold it again next summer, um which was really um powerful. And the teachers that attended are are already ready to implement those things this school year. So happy to answer any questions.
Good question. Um I said he's been here before, but the name sounds familiar. Is this, was he here before COVID?
So Andy Duses used to work for the Northeast Foundation, which was who dug responsive classroom. So if you go back fifteen years, um he worked here through that um organization. So that's, yeah. And he did work with Downey through COVID. It was a lot more challenging. It's hard to do the work that's done through that. So, yeah.
Okay, I was just, I heard the name. I'm like, I think that was, uh, yeah. But yeah, I I got a lot of um positive reviews from him. So well that what he did so.
Well, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Eppenroth. Um I will be requesting um a contract, approval for a contract with Savis Learning. About this time last year, we presented a new sixth through eighth grade ELA resource that we would be using called My Perspectives. Um again, we're constantly planning for new teachers, and we really want our new teachers to get up to speed quickly, especially in the areas of mathematics instruction and literacy. So this is um for fifteen hundred dollars to provide professional development to to new teachers. Um so now I'm going to request some learning resources. I'm going to ask Ms. Slaughter to come up one more time. Um we are going to recommend ratification of the approval between Roland Academy and Achievement Network. It's known as ANET Coaching for Instruction for the time period of July one, twenty twenty two through June thirty, twenty twenty three, in the amount of thirty one thousand dollars funded through the CSI grant.
So Achievement Network is an educational resource agency that works nationwide. Currently in our area, they work with the um school district of Baltimore uh City as well as Pittsburgh Public Schools. And this would be our second year at Roland Academy, having them work with us along with our school improvement plan to focus on effective core instruction. So Achievement Network, while the services that they will provide for us are instructional coaching, um aligning our instructional leadership team, so they come in and set the instructional priorities, help us establish that for the school year. Uh they also do walkthroughs with our instructional leadership team, as well as are able to provide feedback and meet with teachers um to talk about the instruction and what they saw. Um the other thing that we will also have access to is an online platform to help teachers support with planning uh around instruction. One of our focus areas in our schoolman, school improvement plan is focusing on complex text, and they will have access to be able to pull that um according to the level of scholars and where they read, as well as be able to have access to do formative assessments, um like really quick uh one or two questions, the interim before the interim, to assess where they are with their instruction um along with with um questions that are aligned to what scholars are exposed to during uh PSSAs. And so it does get to the rigor of the level of questioning that they get when it comes time for them to have PSSAs. Any questions? Other?
Um, thank you. Can you um give us a kind of a calendar on the um when kind of layout for us the PSSA schedule? Is that always seems a little bit of a misread? When do we get the report from last year's testing? And when does the testing for this year occur? So this happens on a kind of an annual rhythm. Can you kind of uh rough that out for us? We understand when you get the results from last year and when we will get the results from next?
Okay.
Um, so um we receive in the summertime, we already receive the raw data from PSSAs, but the raw data is not yet fully attributed. It's not publishable data at this point. As soon as it is, we'll give an update on our student performance data. I don't know the exact dates. I let me go through the calendar. We did list the windows for PSSAs. It's a two week window in April. Um immediately following our our Keystone is the Keystone Window, which is the first week in May for twenty twenty three. We also plan to um host a Keystone Window for Assessment in January. Yeah. So pretty much the whole, uh one week in April and the whole month of May is the PSSA and Keystone schedule. Um and we will be adding keystones right after the holiday break for um course specific students. So kids who take biology in the in the fall will take their Keystone in January. The other thing that we are planning to add is Summer Keystone, which is something the district hasn't done before. So if a student goes to Ms. Kurt, Dr. Kersey's program, does credit recovery in an area of a trigger course like algebra, literature, or biology, we want a plan to be able to provide the Keystone directly following the assessment, which is new to the school district. So we will be implementing that in the twenty twenty three summer. So just to let you know sort of where the schedule is.
Um just to to add to that, in terms of the work that Achievement Network does, it supports our interim assessments that we do in the district, which are our star assessments. And we look at beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. And the key, and when we do PSSAs, that's kind of our, like, did we land where we wanted to or where we anticipated?
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Slaughter. Um the next learning resources that I'll be, oh, I'm so sorry.
I was just going to follow up with the evaluation of it. How often, like, is there anything that can implement, like, with the PSA to testing is like a pre-test, like, kind of a prep? With offering this program, like a pre-testing to kind of prepare the children to make sure they are actually ready when it comes to actually taking the actual Keystone test?
Yes, um thank you. So we we look at that in two ways. One, the online um platform that teachers will have access to. They'll be able to do like short quizzes um that you heard me say are aligned to the types of questions that they would get with PSSAs. So teachers are able to do that as often as they are able to finish a unit or finish a new concept. So they can do that as often as they would like to inform their instruction. And then the second part of that, we look at um our interim assessments, which are star assessments, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. So we look at that at about October, January, and again, uh approximately May, just to see um where we landed. So with our change in our schedule last year, a little of the success that we saw, and we attribute some of this to Achievement Network, and some of it actually to our ability to change our schedule was um the big, our middle of the year to our end of the year data, we were able to see double-digit gains in um student growth in math and ELA. And so um it just tells us that we're on the right target with some of the supports that we put in place, although we aren't quite there yet with PSSAs. It does let us know that we're incrementally getting there.
Just just so I'm clear, you're talking about when the teachers are teaching a lesson, there's a mini test after that, but then you're also doing interim testing at least with three or four times throughout the year. Just got you.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Um the next um recommendation for ratification of the approval of our Eureka Math K through eight consumable materials. Um the listing is there. All of this will be paid for through Title One funding. Um and then I'd like to ask Ms. Austin to come up again to talk about the three learning resources that we use, particularly with our L students. The first one is called Brain Pop for Use with English Language Development. Um this particular licensing is for a building license at Cougar Academy. It's a K twelve license. Um and it's in the amount of twelve hundred ninety five dollars funded through Title Three. Um we're also recommending approval for licensing with Learning A to Z for L students um for in the amount of thirty four thousand seven hundred and twenty two dollars for the twenty two twenty three school year in paid for through Title Three. And then we're also recommending approval for licensing with Imagine Learning. And you've heard that of that before because we use Imagine Learning for math. But this is Imagine Learning for Language um in the amount of forty five thousand dollars for L student intervention for the twenty two twenty three school year, also funded through Title Three. Any questions for Kathy on those resources?
Yes, could you um explain under number two, under the the mathematics consumables from great minds? What does that all entail? This different schools with different amounts?
Oh, that's that's for the math material. So it's it's, if you um have ever seen students come home with Eureka math books, the practice books are by module. So there's many, there's many practice books so that if a student loses his book, he doesn't lose the whole year's worth of materials. So um each building is for all the students. So the schools with a higher population of students have, we have to purchase more. The other piece about this, though, is that we did a really um intensive inventory of the the materials that were left over from students that moved away, things like that. So some schools um had less transancy through the school year. So we had, we used all the materials, but other schools um had a lot of transancy, and so we had some leftover materials.
Okay. Yeah, just wanted to make sure that was clear, just saying mathematics consumables. I just wanted to help it to understand.
We buy them per child. Yes.
Exactly what that encompasses encompasses, not just consumables, but
Right.
Okay. But thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Austin. Um I'm I'm going to recommend the ratification of an approval with licensing for IXL from the time period of July one, twenty twenty two to July one, twenty twenty three, in the amount of forty seven thousand thirteen dollars. Um we are planning to use this as our intervention tool for middle school, the middle level. But we also use this tool for special education K twelve. So if you have any questions about IXL and how it's used for special education, we have our Director of Special Ed, Crystal Palmer, here. Um but at the middle level, what I will tell you is that in the master schedule, when we have students that are performing under expectation, we know that we have to have very targeted intervention in the area of Eng- of of literacy. The IXL licensing that we receive is the ELA Science and Social Studies. Um we don't buy their math piece because we use Imagine Math for our math, um our math intervention. So just so you know, we have time built in the day for all students to receive intervention or enrichment, no matter whatever they actually need. So are there any questions about IXL and how we're using it in the district? What? You see it. It's a really robust program. It gets better every year. It's very expensive. But you know, when you look at cost per child, and that's really what we do, we really look at the data that it yields and tries to help kids move forward. So thank you. Um recommend ratification for the approval for a contract with Textbook Warehouse. This is an interesting phenomenon. This is for a middle school science fusion textbooks. The reason why we're not buying them directly from the vendor is because it's no longer, they no longer make that consumable. So we're buying it from Textbook Warehouse for this last final year because the next generation science standard just came out and were approved by PDE. This year, we will be writing our new K twelve science curriculum based on the new Pennsylvania standards for science. So we will also do a procurement process for new resources for science K through twelve. Um and then recommend approval for um resources. This is middle school ELA resources. It's through Voyager Sopris Learning. It's um tier two and tier three ELA interventions at the middle level. So the costs are there. Cougar Academy, it's a per-child license, is thirteen fifty six. Uh Camp Curtain, that is a typo. It's three thousand five hundred and sixty six dollars and zero cents for Camp Curtain. Uh Roland is fourteen eighty sixty five, and Marshall Math Sciences two thousand six hundred and fifty eight dollars and eighty five cents for these intervention materials. Oh, that's the, I'm so sorry. I said that incorrectly. That was the Textbook Warehouse. And the Voyager Sopris Learning is in the amount of thirty six hundred ninety one dollars and ninety cents funded through Title One. Those are all the learning resources so far. Uh Special Education, I'd like to uh have Dr. Ms. Crystal Palmer, Director of Special Education, come up to talk about New Story, Harrisburg. Um we plan to send seven students to New Story, Harrisburg for the twenty two twenty three school year. One student will be in the amount of five hundred and thirty five dollars per day, and seven students will be in the amount of four hundred and five students per day. And Doc, um Ms. Palmer is here to answer any questions that you may have about such outplays then.
Hey, um I had a question real quick, actually, going back to the new science standards for textbooks. So just making sure I was understanding it correctly. Science standards changed. The textbooks that we need presently are with the old standards until new textbooks are printed. Is that? new textbooks are printed. Is that?
So, no, not that news. So we are continuing, so students see a continuity or a vertical alignment with science fusion, which is the program or the resource that students have been using for the last six years in Harrisburg. Because we weren't able to write our new science curriculum, PDE was delayed in approving the science standards. So when you write new curriculum, you also do sort of a procurement of resources at that point. You really check out what's correlated with the, the new standards. There's a lot more hands-on STEM activities in the science standards. We need to have materials that reflect that.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Any questions for Mrs. Palmer? And just to note, uh, Mrs. Palmer, uh, her first day was probably about three weeks ago. Uh, she's been a welcome addition and definitely wanted to bring her here to, to, number one, if there were any questions, but also number two, uh, so everyone can start to put a name with a face as our new Director of Special Ed.
Thank you. Um, I will let you know, two of these, two of the seven students at 405 a day, those contracts are going to be reduced to $365 a day. So I'll have those for the next board meeting, um, the changes. So that you'll see those on the next agenda. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I do have a question. Um, are these, are these slots at uh, New Story or are they?
Actually, it's not slots.
Okay, so we didn't, we're not buying space with New Story.
No, sir.
Will they invoice us based on the days that these students attend? These are, these are day students. These are not boarding.
Yes, this is per day.
And uh, do we commit that they will be there all the time?
Um, no.
It's like a contract for the 180 days times this amount.
No, so if a student were to return to the district, then we would not be charged.
Okay.
Ms. Palmer, I, I did have one question. The students that are going to New Story, are these students who were placed there last year or are these new placements for this year?
No, these are students who are already placed there.
Already placed there. So this is just a continuation of their education there.
Yes.
For their IEPs.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I only have two more. Um, an affiliation agreement. Um, we're recommending approval for an affiliation agreement between Harrisburg School District and Losers Music. Um, we have been working very hard um, on ongoing repair of district instruments um, for the music department. Um, we purchased three new pianos this year, one for Scott, one for Camp Curtain, and one Downey, Downey got it. Yeah, I'm just thinking. Okay, so we are really invested in making sure that the, the materials needed to improve our music program are available and that's what this contract does. It's an open invoice and it's not to exceed $10,000 for the school year. Any questions about that?
Yes, actually I do. Um, so this, the affiliation agreement with Losers is only for those three pianos.
No.
Purchased.
I just wanted to kind of throw it in there that we are trying to beef up our, our instruments. So the pianos were a purchase that we used, that we purchased for schools that had pianos that weren't working well.
Okay.
And then this is for our school owns, like, some of the larger instruments, like the bass drums and the, the tubas and things like that that don't travel back and forth with students.
Well, we, uh, can I ask how, how that amount was established? If you're, no, I just want to understand, this agreement is district-wide?
It's district-wide. And the way it works is that if there is a repair needed on an instrument, lo- somebody, a representative from Losers comes to the building, takes the instrument and leaves. There's um, a cost per instrument. I think a violin is $7. Um, uh, xylophone is like $11, whatever the cost is, but this is, we only get charged for what they actually do and it's never to exceed $10,000 in a year.
Okay, um, the, only, the question I have, with it being district-wide, you have different groups, the um, the elementary band, the elementary orchestras, you know, the, the music departments that are trying to um, bring those students up to, I guess, the high school level. And even on the high school level, the jazz band, the orchestra. Do you think that 10,000 is enough?
No.
If you're having, if you're, you're distributing it district-wide and does that also cover um, the instruments, say with, even what you said, the big bass drums with the marching band, those are big bass drums, but so they would replace or repair some of those instruments, but do you really think that if we're really trying to build up the music department in the district, if 10,000 is, is enough? If, would it be better to, to up that amount?
At any point, at any point, we can up the amount, but this is what we're starting with. I think we spent under $7,000 in the 2122 school year, but I can get that information, but it was under seven, it was at, under 7,000 for 2122 and we're gonna just.
You're just gonna adjust it.
Yeah, we'll adjust it as we go. We start to find that we have a need, we'll bring it to you for approval to increase the service.
And this is only for repair of the instruments. What about for purchase?
No, this is not the same. This is just a, an affiliate, what? Oh, okay, yeah, it, go ahead.
Sir, application, we included replacements of musical instruments K-12. So in our current budget, we have $100,000 budgeted with an allotment per building all the way from our elementaries up to our high schools to replace musical instruments. So those that are beyond repair, those that are beyond their useful life to be able to support the program. So the 10,000 will just be used to repair the instruments that are deemed repairable. And our department head of our music department, it, it acts as a conduit to make that decision, K-12 of, do we repair or is it pass repair? We look at replacement. However, knowing the fact that we are investing so much in our music program, we wanted to make sure we had a nice bucket of funds available for buying new instruments, K-12. And there's an inventory that happened in the spring. So we knew exactly how many of each type of instrument we had, K-12, so that with the de- department head's guidance, we can look at proper, you know, replacement of, of those musical instruments. So there is that bucket of money out there to do that well beyond the $10,000 for repair.
And that's, that's just covering music within the school buildings during the school day? Or are we talking i- including like the marching band?
It includes all instruments utilized by our students.
Even though I'm a little biased, yes. Okay, so the, it's, if I understand, it's 100,000 for the music department, but this right here is 10,000 just for repair. And as the music department expands each year, you're going to look at upping this. Is this the only um, affiliation agreement we have with music repair? I know there was another um, oh, I can't think of the name of the, we used, we used to work with them. So this is the only one that we, this is the only person that's going to be touching our instrument.
With the exception of, I don't, they don't do pianos. So we would have piano tuners. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, th- they work with district-owned instruments to repair them on an ongoing basis throughout the year.
Okay, and so, but I'm just making sure that there's more to, as we grow, we're.
As we grow, we would.
I, I think the important uh, point to note here is that we are not going to let our kids not have what they need in order to participate in the program. I think we are all, as a board and receiver, committed to that.
And that's exactly what I like to hear. So thank you so much.
All right. And then lastly, I'm going to ask um, Ms. Peters, the Director of Student Services, to um, discuss with you the PA Life Sharing Agreement. Um, we would like to ratify an agreement with PA Life Sharing to provide nursing services to the school district for the 2223 school year. The reason why it's ratified at this point is because we needed to have nursing for Ms. Cur- Dr. Kersey's program throughout the summer. We had to make sure we had nurses on staff. Um, so I wanted uh, Ms. Peters to be here in case you have any questions regarding nursing.
None? Okay.
Well, actually, I do have a question. Sorry. I know that um, Dr. Kersey's programming was supported or facilitated or funded by Esser, right, in my understanding. Okay. Uh, is that also the funding source for nurses that have to serve during that time too?
But I don't, no.
Uh, these are funded through the general fund as um, described on the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. And this, this will um, work through the rest of the school year as well, in this agreement, so, yes. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, can you describe uh, what instructions we've given PA Life Sharing uh, with regard to recruitment for diversity?
Recruitment for?
Diversity, so nurses of color.
Um, we, we have worked with Pennsylvania Life Sharing for several years. We've had our contract or, you know, a service agreement with them and we have you know, not been particularly, you know, asking for the diversity of their nurses, but overall, I know that we have had a diverse um, pop- population of nurses from that um, agency coming into our buildings.
And we don't uh, monitor that or manage it in any way. We don't, we don't analyze. Do we get local? One of the themes this evening, the reason I ask is, one of the themes this evening is that uh, we're going to engage a little later in the meeting in a conversation about how we can do diversity in contracting. And here's a good example of one where we can kind of handpick who comes into uh, the building to give services. Is there any preference for a Harrisburg resident, for example?
Okay, um, I actually haven't pursued that with, with PA Life Sharing with regard to like, just specifically.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to do that. I, you're, you're accurately reporting is, is that, is that on our radar?
It is on our radar. It is on the radar. And many, I will say this for this particular agency, Pennsylvania Life Sharing. And as I shared, we've ha- we've utilized them for man, eight or nine years at least. Um, as long as I've been in this particular position, we've utilized them. And I have some nurses from Pennsylvania Life Sharing that have been in our buildings for the last four or five years. They want to come back. And so they've, you know, we, we've worked really hard. Um, I've worked really hard with their super, their nursing supervisor to, to kind of build that. So they're in, so they're dedicated to a building. They're just not here and here and all over the district. So they build that rapport, they build that family community. And you know, I, I've had a couple of them that have wanted to come to the district, but you know, the agency frowns upon that, whatever that buyout clause is or whatever, but um, but anyway, so yeah.
Uh, that's you, you addressed my question. Thank you.
Sure. Anything else? Yes, Mr. Roy.
I have one more. I have one, oh, I'm sorry.
All right, with the um, that's nice with the Life Sharing, but they have their difficulties too. Because there's a nationwide shortage of nurses. You know, and every time you turn on the television and you watch them on those medical, you know, shows, they're always talking about the shortages they have in that profession. You know, and it's nice that we consider the diversity because it should be. But you know, we're kind of stuck with what we got. You know, because of the profession, you know, is failing in itself. So it, it, it's good that you are taking the time to address that sort of situation, but we really don't want to be without a nurse, no matter what nationality.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Hi, I just have three quick things. One, is there um, are these um, a certain number of slots to fill these positions? Is there a minimum that we're having and is there a cap on the amount that we're spending?
I missed the second two questions.
Is there um, a minimum that uh, this, that they're providing and is there a cap to what we're going to be spending?
As far as the number of nurses, the number of, not to my knowledge, no. It, it, I mean, we have, I, there are currently, we have seven district nurses on staff right now. And so, and that, one of those includes our certified school nurse, of which we only have one in the district. So we have one certified school nurse, so for all of our nurses that we, that we have in the district.
Provided by this person, by, by this group or our, our?
Our.
Our, okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um, but as far as, you know, utilizing their services, we, this past school year, due to COVID, um, and the strong need of having nursing services and ensuring that we have a nurse in every one of our buildings every day, we um, you know, we, we were able to secure two nurses. We, you know, I was asked if we could have two nurses in there every day. Um, if nothing else, you know, between just illness and COVID and just daily trafficking and charting and all of that, that um, goes on with the responsibilities, because we don't have health aides as we had 15 years ago to, to assist in the health rooms. So having this agency and having them as an additional person, if one of our nurses happened to be out ill for the day, there was always a nurse in the building, whether, you know, from the agency. So I didn't have to pull another nurse from another building to come and cover or it just worked out and really well that way. And as far as, I didn't get, I didn't hear anything from Mr. Turman or anybody else that you're, you're utilizing too many nurses from the agency, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there, we're going to have what we need, all, you know, always have someone that's available, but we're not putting a cap on what we're spending. There's a lot of times we have that cap on, we're only going to spend this much or, so there's no cap, just what we need, it's going to be provided.
I will share this, uh, you know, Mr. Roy alluded to it. We know there is a nursing shortage and, you know, we did struggle a little bit last school year with Pennsylvania Life Sharing. They just didn't have the pool of nurses that they had previously. And in, in order to ensure having the staff every day in the building as we wanted them to be, um, I actually reached out and, and was able to secure and it was approved to have another agency uh, pool of nurses, you know, to, to come in the buildings as well. So we utilize Pennsylvania Life Sharing and we also utilize another nursing service as well.
Thank you.
That's how important that.
Okay, my question is, are we um, what are some incentives that we are offering to recruit nurses outside of the agency? And also, are we using these same numbers that are presented today to recruit?
Oh, I don't know that we, from a human resources personnel, I don't know that we offer any incentives to, as far as like signing bonus or anything. I don't know that we have, that we do that or that's, I mean, I don't know.
That is not something at this point in time that we've, in terms of assigning bonuses or anything uh, for nurses. Um, I will say that um, kind of going back to what was discussed earlier, is just as well as you have a teacher shortage, is just as well as you have a nursing shortage as well. Um, Mrs. P-, uh, Mrs. Peters did uh, come to us last year about bringing the other agency on. Um, the other complications last year was COVID and all the contact tracing. Uh, we had to take one nurse, Mrs. Fitzgerald, and honestly, she serviced all the schools just helping us get through uh, COVID last school year. Um, that in and of itself was taking a lot of time uh, for, for the nurses who were in the buildings uh, with calling parents, bringing parents in, sending the letters home. Um, if you were a close contact, um, which is why we really had to utilize, it was all hands on deck in terms of the amount of nurses that we had in buildings last school year.
In addition to all of her very, you know, thorough emails, she sounded every day on all of the updates for, you know, for the district for COVID. So it was very very large portion of her time.
Excuse me, I think I could also add something to that. Um, the HEA agreement that was approved for um, this upcoming school year, uh, also has a revised salary schedule for our like specialist positions, which includes the nurses. Um, so there was um, a recognition of trying to increase the compensation to um, increase the candidate pool. So the nurses, psychology, school psychologists, speech and language therapists, um, um, occupational therapists, physical therapists, all of those positions um, are now placed on a higher salary schedule.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please speak directly into your microphone. Our IT director and multimedia manager are trying to support the people. We have about an audience of thirty people trying to listen on YouTube. So please help us out and pull your mic to you, speak directly into it. Don't turn your head to the left or right. Thank you so very much.
Okay, Mr. Turman, I have one more, and I know you are sick of hearing from me tonight, but recommend approval of an MOU between Harrisburg School District and specifically Cougar Academy fifth and sixth graders and Penn State University for the purposes of delivering and participating in the Build a Strong Identity and Coping Skills Basics Curriculum for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Last year, we had the opportunity to have Penn State come to Camp Curtain to deliver this, and they came back to us saying that they receive, they received more grant money. It wasn't enough to go to Roland, but it was enough to address the students over at Cougar. So we are implementing basics at Cougar next school year.
Thank you, Dr. Sneeve. And hearing that all questions have been answered, Madam Secretary, I would kindly request that all of the items under Office of Academics, Letters B through F be added to the August twenty-third agenda for approval as consent agenda items. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Soski. Next, we are gonna move to the Office of Human Resources, and I'll be led by Mrs. Heidi Zula.
Uh good evening, everyone. The first item for review and approval would be uh A, to approve the job description for a virtual instruction support teacher. Uh this is a new position that we're looking to add for the new school year to assist in allowing us to have certified teachers uh teach our students um within the school um that they're assigned. So what we're looking to do is have a specifically um looking to place these pe- teachers at John Harris where um they will be taught by, in the biology um classrooms, where they will be taught by a certified teacher in another district building virtually. And we will have these virtual instruction support teachers um live in the classroom with the students sitting in John Harris. Um and they will provide um like be serving as co-teachers, where they will provide um in-person supervision of the students, take attendance, um distribute course materials, collection, um deal uh handle parent communications and assist the students um with their work. So we're looking for approval to add this as a new job description within the district. The next item is um new for the Office of Human Resources. Um it is in line with Board Policy three oh one, which is the creating a position. Uh so these are going to be listed on the agenda for review to create and eliminate new positions that um are deemed appropriate by the administration. Um these positions that are listed here now have, were included as part of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year budget. And so you can see there's a number of creations, as well as a number of elimination of positions based upon the needs within the various school buildings. Point C um is retirements. Uh we have three individuals who have expressed um their interest in retirement, so they're listed there with their effective dates. And then we have resignations and end of service for employees under um Bullet D. Um there's a number of staff that have submitted their resignation since the last June um board meeting over the summer. Under item E, we have the employment of new staff for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um these are all new um staff members to the district. Um vast majority of them are instructional staff, who will be um filling our vacancies that we currently have within the district. Under point F are the change of employment status. So we have a number of existing staff members currently within the district who will be transferring um that we're seeking approval to transfer into new positions uh within the district that are currently vacant. Column or item G is column movement. Um this is the column movement uh for our professional staff members in accordance with the HEA agreement. Um these individuals have submitted transcripts to support um their movement from one column to the next on the salary schedule with the effective date of the twenty-two, twenty-two. Item H are the requests for approval for our supplementals and additional stipends that are paid to our existing staff members. The first item um is the um mentors that will serve our new professional staff members. They're listed on an attachment to the agenda. Um there, in addition, we have a number of supplemental positions to include team leaders, um subject advisors, um and some coordinator positions that are also listed there um throughout the various um school buildings within the district. And then their appropriate stipend in accordance with the HEA agreement is listed. We have under um point I, summer employment. Um these individuals will be serving as the professional staff members working within the summer bridge program at John Harris Cougar Sci- and SciTech. Um this was referred to by Dr. Kersey in her presentation. Um they're listed separately as they, um these individuals fall under the HEA MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding for Summer Work. Um point J, we have our family medical leave. This is for information purposes only. Um we have three staff members who have um submitted paperwork and have received approval for family medical leave um based upon the dates noted on the agenda. Under um point K, we have a request that is um submitted for approval for uncompensated leave for Ms. Carmen Rivera, who currently serves as a special education paraprofessional. Um she is seeking to take uncompensated leave to complete student teaching. Um so she is um looking to um maintain her position with the district um until she has finished that placement. Are there any questions on those staffing items? Yes.
Just under the the creation and the elimination of the positions. So basically, what you said, the elimination of the positions and the creation of them be cost is they're basically gonna offset each other. If you're if you're eliminating a position, which means that that money was already allocated for that position, if that's being eliminated and you're creating one, that's, they're pretty much gonna offset each other.
Um, not, it it may not be a completely equal offset, however, it is part of the budget that was prepared by Dr. Stokes. So anytime we create or eliminate a position, um it's a conversation specifically with Dr. Stokes to ensure that it's within the budget.
Okay, and just to, just a a quick one, under, let's just say, under, one is this, um there's a media literacy teacher, a new one at Roland. But there's an elimination of a multimedia teacher at Roland, which was vacant. Is that a a different um thing? Is that a different title? Or is this a different position? It does, it, I was, I'm just confused.
That's a really good question. So last year was the first year that PDE ever checked certifications of any other subject other than math, reading, or ELA, science and social studies. So when that happened, that forces us to take a look at the properly approved elective courses with PDE and to either rename them so that they're more in sync with PDE. So um last year, each of our middle schools needed two. So they needed two multimedia or media literacy, which we're switching, we're switching the name of the course and the code. Um but in the new master schedule for the middle school, we only need one specialist at each building.
Okay, but if you're eliminating that position, that title.
So if we're eliminating one at Camp Curtain, that leaves one. We only need one. So last year we had two.
Right, but but my point is, if this person is at Roland, you had a multimedia teacher. Now, because of PDE, you had to change that that title to media literacy teacher.
Correct.
You're eliminating that position from Camp Curtain, but it doesn't say anything about a creation of that title under that. Do you do you understand, do you see what I'm?
Yes.
It does just the.
I hear you. I I I don't think that we, well, we haven't been able to fill that position, so I.
Well, no, it says it was filled, but just that title hasn't been created. You eliminated the old position.
Okay.
Eliminated that.
So that might be an oversight that we didn't change. Thank you for pointing that out.
We will have some discussion when we get back tomorrow uh to make sure between myself, uh Dr. Sneeve and and Dr. Stokes in terms of where that's at, what that position is, and then we'll report out and make the correction in for the twenty-third.
Okay, um moving on to the other HR items, the general HR items listed. The first is re- recommending approval of an addendum to the Kelly Education Agreement to update substitute teacher rates effective July one um twenty-twenty-two. As part of our initiative to increase um our substitutes as well as um fill some of the vacancies that we currently have to start the school year. Um we have made a big push to bring back our retired teachers. Um so we recently had a job fair on August fourth, um held out at Harrisburg High School at the John Harris Campus um to recruit um substitutes and specifically try to draw in some of the retirees. So there were revised rates for the retirees to entice them to come back. Um we've partnered with the um Pennsylvania Association of School Employee Retirees, um PASSER, I think is their um acronym um to try to get the word out. Um and we've had some um definite interest in that. Um so we would look to utilize those um retirees as well as um any of our other substitutes who would have a bachelor's degree that we can get them emergency permitted um to fill some of the current vacancies that we have um within each of our schools. Um so we're looking for approval to uh revise the substitute teacher rates with Kelly Education Agreement to include that retiree rate. The second item is recommending approval for a fee for service agreement um with EH and D to provide insurance and risk management services for a three-year term from July one of twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five and an annual fee of fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, which would be funded out of the human, um excuse me, health insurance um trust fund. This is um, they serve as our consultant for our workers' compensation program, our accident illness and injury prevention program. Um they provide guidance and oversight of our third-party administrator for our workers' compensation um and assist us with those insurance matters. Um the third item is a recommendation for approval of the specific and aggregate excess workers' compensation and employee liability um indemnity policy through Bridge Access Solutions. Um this would be for um July one, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. And that would be at an annual deposit premium of seventy-four thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars, again funded through the health insurance trust fund that has been established. This would be um any um essentially like a stop-loss type insurance that if our um we are self-funded for workers' compensation, so if our claims went above and beyond um a certain um level um that the insurance then that we purchase would kick in and um cover those additional high-cost claims. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zula. Hearing no further questions. Madam Secretary, I would ask that uh the item under letter A be moved to the consent agenda for August twenty-third as well as the items in letter B with the one change noted by Ms. Robinson to add the media literacy position to creation to offset the elimination of the multimedia teacher. Items from letter C, D, E, F, G, H, I can all be moved to the consent agenda for August twenty-third for approval. Letter J is information only, so no need to repeat that on the agenda for the next meeting. And letters K and L items should be also added as consent agenda for August twenty-third. Noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Soski, and also thank you, Mrs. Zula. Next, we will have Mr. Everett, Cal Everett, come up and give us some information on middle school sports. And then also talk briefly about uh some of the new coaching staff, well, coaching staff and game worker personnel.
Good evening. Uh first, I'd like to speak on letter A, which is middle school sports. We we currently plan to offer an opportunity for our middle school students to participate in following sports in the fall. We have our football and cheerleading. Uh we currently have approximately twenty-five seventh and eighth graders that are on our cheerleading in the junior high football team, junior high, so that's ninth grade football team. In the winter, we play on all fun and boys' basketball, girls' basketball and wrestling. In the spring, we play on all fun and girls' volleyball, boys' soccer and boys and girls' track and field. Um we also have ten middle school students that uh have been shown to girls' volleyball workouts as well, in which girls' volleyball doesn't, for middle school, won't take place into the spring, but they show up for off-season training. And all of our middle school students that have been uh shown up for these sports, they've been shown up consistently throughout the whole summer. Letter B, it's boys and girls' varsity basketball coach. Uh we recently lost our boys and girls' varsity basketball coach uh to retirement. The process we use is we posted the vacancy, put together an interviewing team, and interviewed various candidates. We now decedent is down to two, a coaching vacancy. The final two candidates were later interviewed for a second time by Mr. Turner himself. And we had some students that are currently on the basketball team involving the process as well. And that's how the final candidates were ultimately selected. Letter D, fall coaches. There's a list of fall coaches and volunteers that will coach our students uh for the fall athletic season. And letter E, game worker stipends, is just a pay rate for each each worker at various athletic events that we uh host. Letter F is uh the game workers, which is just a list of all the workers that work the various events uh for our game, for our events, for our games that we host. And then the last one, which is letter G, is the retention bonus for coaches. Uh it's just, it's been many years since our coaches have received a raise. We also do not have a system in place to make sure coaches receive any type of raise. We have, I know for sure, at least one coach that has been working here at least ten years and hasn't received a raise at all. So our plan is to give a retention bonus, just to let all of our coaches know that we understand what's going on. We have to do some studying and do some research and figure out a way to make sure all of our co- coaches are properly compensated. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Hi, Coach.
Hello.
Um, just a a quick question, the retention bonuses, that's gonna be in addition to, I guess, whatever supplemental they have?
Yes, it'll come at the end of the athletic season. Uh and it's just a little something to let our coaches know that, you know what? We see there is an issue, and there's not a whole lot we can do, but this is just a little something to let you know that we are gonna work on this and try to make it right.
So basically, what you're saying, we we need to do something in the budget to possibly raise the supplemental?
Absolutely, yes.
And what about um F, oh, I'm not sure, I forget what it's called, the um, like after the season, like the extended season?
Yes, that as well. I mean, all of that'll be factored in.
Okay, and I had one more. Question for you about the middle school sports. Have you gotten any pushback? From the, I guess, community. Um, organizations, if we're gonna have football or um. Uh, the the cheerleading and and all these sports on the middle school level. Have you got, have you gotten any pushback from the communities that have those already? I guess they like our, um, I guess, what do you call our midget leagues here?
Yes, uh, we haven't, I haven't received any kickback at all. Uh, our seven and eighth graders, they're als- they're allowed to participate in the midget league. But they also can make the decision to come participate on our junior high slash ninth grade teams. So, you know, we get a a good mix that decide, some may decide to. Play for the school team, some may decide to play for the midget team. So it's, you know, it's basically up to wha- whatever fam- whatever the family wants to do, but I haven't received any kickback at all at this moment.
Um, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, first, thanks for everything you're doing, you know, middle school sports. I wasn't very athletic, but I understand and appreciate the value of middle school sports. Um, I've talked to a couple of people who have expressed interest in, you know, like, kind of cultivating a golf. Um, outing or or opportunity for young people in Harrisburg has, has that come internally at all? Just curious.
It has not at the moment. Uh, actually, I did receive an email from someone uh, not too long ago. And that's something that I will continue to look into, but this, that's something that's new. Um, you know, as far as golf, but that's something that can take place if we can garner enough interest.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
I wanted to make a comment, and it's actually not about sports at all. Um, with the um, discussion of bringing middle school sports. I've heard nothing but great things from the community about actually bringing that back, being able to build bench strength. And start working with kids at a much earlier level. I just see that as fantastic opportunities for our students outside of the classroom. Um, I too was not athletic at all. Surprise. But there's a lot of other programs that are non-sport related. That I'd also like to see come back into the middle school program here. A more robust music program, um, doing plays and musicals in the schools. Because it's not just what happens on the stage. There's all kinds of stem and steam that can go with that. And building the stage, directing, lighting, music, all of that, just as a start. There's a lot of other programs that we could engage our kids in the outside of the classroom that would get them excited. Like I said, this is not to take anything away from what you're doing with sports, because I I see the results. And I really do like what we're doing there and the support that our athletes get to move on. But uh, just wanted to bring that up if we could touch base on that in some form for the community to know that there's interest.
Yes, I definitely agree with that. I definitely agree.
And I can just add uh, some information on that. Um, now, I'm not gonna make any promises. Because we are just in the discussion phase, but um, Mr. Troutman and a couple of the music teachers have approached. And had some discussion about um, having the first junior musical potentially for the for the spring of this year. So um, there is some discussion. Um, we are just in the infancy stage at this point. Um, so, but we did have some discussion about it over the summer. Um, the administration is in full support of it. Uh, I think the first step um, that the music teachers would like to see is not to do a full-blown musical, knowing it's. What I gather, there's never been one, um, but to start small to try and gain some interest. So um, that is definitely on the radar, um, hopefully for the spring of this year.
Um, I just wanted to to bring that back to the the sports aspect of it. I I completely forgot my question at first. We have, um, you were mentioning the bringing uh, basketball and wrestling and volleyball and soccer. Um, to the lower level, lower levels, the middle school levels. Um, do we have a lot of interest in in tennis? I mean, you have the tennis court. Do we, do we utilize that a lot? Or is that more, is that more just the outside community using those tennis courts? Or do do we have interest in that?
No, we, we do have girl, we do have uh, girls' tennis for varsity. Um. But not on a large level. Um, I do know that our numbers have traditionally been really, really low with varsity tennis. Where, you know, it's really close to being able to, being able to or not being able to fill the team. But with middle school, with the middle school sports, with us not offering those sports in such a long time. And some of them forever, which would be middle school tennis.
Right.
Um, you know, it's gonna be a process, and I'm not even sure how it's gonna go, how it's gonna come along. Um, but middle school tennis is something that can definitely be added at some point. But those are the one, the ones that, you know, we decided to go with are the ones that have a pretty good feeling that we may get decent numbers. And then eventually we can, you know, add on to those.
Right, and I I I do think we we have the interest. I mean, look how soccer came along. It was just a handful for a while and that built up. So I really think that that interest in tennis, I think if they know that it's available.
Yes.
That may spark that interest, because I think, I don't think a lot of our students realize that that is available.
Yes, I agree. Yes.
Thank you, Coach. Uh, I'm curious, when you do seventh and eighth grade, that's a unified uh, district-wide team. So that's, uh, for example, when you do fall football, are they, have they started practicing already?
Well, for football, we're, what we, what we're doing is we're having seventh, eighth and ninth as one. Because if we did just seventh and eighth, we wouldn't have enough, we wouldn't have enough numbers right now. So we're just doing seventh, eighth and ninth as one.
How do they, um, what are the logistics? Do we have practice space for the students once the school year begins?
Ye- as of, yes, we will have practice space, but if we were to add just a separate seventh and eighth. Then we would have to look at getting transportation up to William Penn possibly, um, or just have to.
How do you plan on doing that? Like, how do you get a child from, where's the practice? Is it at?
The practice, no, currently we are all practicing at at John Harris Campus. And we have transp- we have an activity bus that'll get the students from their middle schools up to John Harris.
So they have a way to get to John Harris?
Yes.
I noticed on the agenda tonight that the uh, the Harrisburg Young Professionals use the. Uh, William Penn Field uh, for. Football on the weekends. Do we use the William Penn Field for any uh, organized activities?
We haven't.
Is it in any kind of condition to use it?
It would just need some little bit of maintenance, but it could be used, yes.
So you haven't, you haven't hit the crisis point yet.
No, not yet.
You've run out of, uh, they're like, get those kids out of here. You're in my way.
No, not yet.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming. Baker Field. There. Especially now you've started. Uh. During your high school football, come back because in the high football, it feeds the Cougars. It's like. Cam Curtain fed William Penn, Edison fed John Harris. So I'm glad to see that back.
Yes.
Can you use Baker Field rather than sitting there and do whatever? Besides the dude with the old way. And you use Baker Field as their home field as opposed to Severance Field with the Cougars playing. Just so we get some use out of it.
Yes, um.
You know, it's not in that bad a shape. We said a couple of little things need to be done. Baker Field, this is the field I played on it.
I mean, we we can use it. Uh, we definitely can use it. It would just take, you know, like I said, we have to get train, when it comes to football, then it's about get, where are they gonna store their pads? You know, and things of that nature. Before William Penn was shut down, there was a place where that they can store their equipment. You know, we had a seventh, eighth grade team and they could store all of the equipment at William Penn. So right now, that becomes an issue with where they're gonna put their, all of their gear and things of that nature.
So now this incorporated the seventh, eighth and ninth grade. That's back in the day, and that is now your freshman team?
Yes, it's my freshman team, which means that the seventh and eighth graders can participate on that team as well. Correct.
But this, this, this is an idea. Some of us out of that field and it. I'm a moderate man. All right, thanks, Coach.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for A.D. Everett? All right, thank you, A.D. Everett. And the only good thing uh, before we close out uh, uh, the coaching and the the athletic activity is. Mrs. Zula, if you can very quickly talk through our C clubs and activity advisors.
Sure, um, this section has been added to um, the athletic and activities. As these club advisors are in an extracurricular role. Um, so we have uh, requests to approve um, a few of the club advisors at John Harris and SciTech. Um, and as we get additional ones for the upcoming school year, we'll be presenting those to the board for review.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Drayton, at this time, I would ask that all items under B, C, D, E, F. And G be added as consent agenda items, and they're gonna actually be added under the Office of Human Resources. Uh, with a subtitle for athletics activities. Thank you.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Suski. Now we will shift to the Office of Operations. First up will be Mr. Craig Glass.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I have a several facility-related updates, uh, one of them being Severance Field. Um, so um, substantial completion for that project was supposed to be August eighth. Um, sorry to report that due to contractor issues, that timeline has not been met. Uh, following our construction meeting earlier today, a new completion date of August twentieth was determined. All supplies needed to complete the project and turf. Uh, will be starting installation tomorrow. Um. It appears, you know, obviously, we know there's issues across the country, whether it's supply chain, whether it's manpower. Um, it looks like where where fell short was the turf suppliers uh, failed to get a team together. Uh, so it's my understanding as of a meeting, it's two thirty San Fernando, it's gonna be a small army of men there tomorrow. And uh, this thing is really gonna take off. Um, the lighting that has been installed, I got the hats off the pagoda, they did a really good job. And I even threw that out there at the meeting today. I said, hey, you know, you can turn the lights on and work through the night if you need to. Long J ain't affecting the community. Well, you know, our, our students really need this, this field done. And you know, it was made quite clear that, you know, August eighth was the deadline. We had facilities guys out at the baseball field painting lines so that. Coach Cal can have the kids out there doing heat acclimation this week. Uh, so it it was really an inconvenience to our students. And so we're really pushing hard on our end to make sure that that this project gets underway as quickly as possible and and done right. And the students deserve it. Does anybody have any questions about the field or the turf or anything going?
Just one clarification question. You said eight twenty is substantial completion or final completion substantial?
Well, it was the twenty-fourth at the beginning of the meeting, so I'm gonna say. I think this is a daily kind of really get out there like, like. I'm gonna be really shocked to get out there first thing tomorrow morning and see what we have. And you know, like I said, two weeks ago, at the construction meeting, nobody had a timeline issue. So we're trying to figure out what happened. So, um, you know, like I said, it's very disappointing. It's it's disappointing for me. This is, you know, what I do.
Well, thank you for continuing to ride herd on them.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I will.
I did have one question. Um, with these contracts, are there penalties for missing deadlines?
There is, there is penalties. Like I can tell you right now, I'm billing them for the time that took for my guys to stripe fields.
Excellent.
And for the materials to stripe the fields. Uh, guess what? It rained today and they're gonna cut grass and they're gonna have to do it again Thursday. And I believe there's a clause in the contract that i- is uh, if they didn't turn it over by a certain date, there's a certain dollar amount that we get back. I think it's somewhere around five hundred dollars a day. So I don't think it's much, but yeah, I think we're pretty, pretty upset, like. I I don't even really know. Like, everybody knew going in, the contract, they bid on it, they knew the timeframe, they knew the timeline, they knew stipulations. I think at one point they were, they said they were, they were having an issue getting security clearances, and that's something that we require here. And it was something that was known from day one. So I I don't know where the the miscommunication was, but.
Oh, no, and we're not the first ones to ever do this.
Yeah.
We're not the first customer there to ever do this as a school district, so yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, everything, you know, I I've been involved in a bunch of different construction projects in the district. Most of them seamless. You know, but there's always that one, and this is that one that, you know, I I didn't even, I dreaded all day coming here to talk about it tonight, because I'm not happy about that. Like, I was excited for months and we got everything done and here we are, we're not across the finish line, so. But we'll get there and it'll be before, it'll be before the first home game. It better be. That's all I can say. Um, I know Mr. Term is a little upset too, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Um.
Um, quick question. Now, I I don't know anything about re-turfing of field and things like that. Once that's done, does it have to, is it like, once it's done, they can immediately use it or is it?
They'll be, they'll be able to get right on it.
Okay, and the, is it, is the field in the the track? Am I correct?
Track's coming. They can't do the track to the field till the turf's in. So that's a delay. Now they they finished, they they finished paving for the track today, so that part is done. Now it's, now it's, you know, the turf company is behind the eight ball. They need to get this, the turf laid, seamed up together. Get all the graphics and everything in it.
Oh.
And then they can start the track, and the track, I think, is take, it takes less time.
Okay, but as long as we're done by the, I think it's our first home game is the the third, our first September third.
Yeah, we're not thinking that way at the meetings, like we're, you know, we're not like, you know. It's not okay that that the football field is ready for the first home game. It needs to be done before that. Like, it absolutely needs. With the track and everything, you know, like I said, it. In this day and age, I don't know how you fix that, you know, like, not not. A small army of people from the district couldn't just go out there and lay that turf, because believe me, if that's what the case, it, we'd be working on it. But that's not the case.
Yeah, but thank you. It literally should have been done yesterday, but yes.
It should have been.
Okay.
Any more questions on turf? All right, moving on.
How many other projects would they work on aside from this one that they're doing now?
Turf company?
Yeah.
It's my, it's my understanding, they did, they did three other projects with the same general contractor. So I, like I said, I don't know. General contractor was uh, the one who selected that as their uh, contractor to do that job. So I I don't have any experience with them. In fact, I don't have any experience with turf. The turf was installed pretty much a year after I started here. And I had no, no saying that. So, you know, we, we were expecting that this was gonna be. Start to stop, no issues, like everybody involved was reputable. Um, I just, like I said, somebody dropped the ball. And I, and I, and I think I said, I think it's, 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 it's a he, the human thing, the getting the people. You know, and you can't get a project started if you don't have the right guys to do the job or enough guys to do the job. I'm not protecting anybody. I still think it was, it was shoddy that we didn't get it, and I stand by that. Said, I think they need to be accountable for it.
So before they, so before that, so before they were selected, um, there was a bidding process, right?
Yes.
So did they show any of their work or anything like that, or any pictures of the work? Did they present anything? What are some things that they presented that made us go along with them?
I'm pretty sure the general contractor submitted the different fields and that 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 they did and that they're working on currently.
Okay.
So I don't think there was a question on their capabilities if they could do it, or, or, you know, what their selection of of contractor would have been.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Moving forward, new chillers have been installed at Melrose and Downey, finally. Um, new V A V units are currently being installed at Melrose and should be completed by August nineteenth. Um, we have done exterior L E D lighting at most of the schools. That will be completed in the coming months. Um, next week, uh, we begin demo and installation of new playgrounds at Ben Franklin and Scott Schools. Exterior pressure washing in some locations is currently taking place and will finish up next week. Several flooring projects have been comple- completed throughout the district. Uh, roofing project of this building um, is wrapping up this week and tear down scaffolding will take place next week. So we'll get our parking lot back again. Uh, and it was a much-needed uh, repair that we did. Does anybody have any questions on any of those items?
Um, I wanna ask a similar question to the previous. Uh, when we do these projects like the uh, H E A C work at Melrose. That's done under a. that's done under a pre-negotiated pricing kind of arrangement that's
Yeah.
Or, or
KPN or Omni or a negotiated contract.
And who organizes that? Does the district do that through Fidavia? Does Fidavia have any role in that?
Well, they kind of sit in on the conversations. We, you know, we together, we work on, on what the plan looks like. What, what is the scope working needs to be done? What are our avenues? How can we get, how do we get there? Is it, is it a bid project? Do we have time to get it out for bid? Do we go through KPN Network, which is approved already pre-bid?
And same question that I asked before is, do we have any policy for instructing the construction manager on recruiting certified MBE, WBE contractors?
Not that I'm aware of. I know in the, in the bid process, we have that language in there. But in the KPN contract, I, I don't think that that language is there. I can check.
And to the best of your knowledge, we did quite a bit of construction this summer and those contractors were kind of selected. They weren't, wasn't publicly bid, so it was it was contractors that could meet that pre-negotiated pricing, Co-Stars or Pepom or GSA or one of those. And to the best of your knowledge, were any of the contractors certified MBE or WBE?
Uh, not to my, I, I'm not aware of that.
We don't really have a reporting, same question, is we don't really have a monitoring and reporting mechanism that we would ask Fidavia to come back and say, you know, what percentage of this contract went to MBE, WBE?
That's correct, but I, I think it's something that we can do.
Yeah. So then, I, I think that we're going to engage in that conversation over the next several months is, is this something that we should be doing? It's uh, we could, uh, my perception is we don't know. Is we didn't, we don't really know. I couldn't tell you. As I look through the agenda, I couldn't identify any individual item in here where I thought, well, this is probably an MBE or WBE certified vendor that's receiving taxpayer dollars. And I think that question is gonna, is gonna be asked more frequently.
Mr. Thompson, I, I can respond to that. Mr. Summer through the Office of the Receiver is doing some research on the cooperative purchasing procedures and is looking at the Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit who handles the cooperative purchasing, Pepham and Keystone Purchasing Network to find out what requirements they go through. So we will have an answer for you on that.
I can tell you the Omni contract as well as all the KPN projects, they did have to redo all of their language to comply with the ESER funding because all of the federal ESER funding does have the preference for the women-owned minority-owned businesses. So there are priorities that are placed when they do those bids for those businesses. How many are rewarded? That's something we'd have to look into, but all of the Omni contracts and the KPN do have that preference language written in all of their bid specifications.
Any other questions?
We will now shift to Mr. Norholz, uh, who is going to do an update on student technology agreement.
Excuse me. I think we missed, we missed a spot.
Pardon, he's cleaning up buildings?
We missed a spot and I, and I'll keep it, I'll keep it short and sweet, and this is from the heart. Um, so this summer of all the years I've been at this district has been the most challenging summer we've ever had. Um, I can tell you sleepless nights, weekends being here, um, you know, moving fifth grade, moving our enrollment center. At, at points, we were 20% down on staffing. And, you know, we're coming down the finish line here, you know? In a perfect world, these buildings would be ready to go, but we're, we're almost there. But almost there, we're coming down the finish line. And I gotta tell you, the staff, the custodial staff, we need to, you know, we need to tip our hats. Like, they need to really feel it from all of us because I feel I feel it every day. And you know, for for the last three years, there's been, there's been, there's been an issue in this district with, you know, who do you work for? Do you work for Aramark or do you work for, you know, Aspen? And I'll tell you, you know, this was the first year they worked together collaborative. And you know what? They did it because it's for the kids. Okay, so like I said, there's not a day that goes by, like, I'm telling you right now, I don't know how I'm gonna pull this off yet, but I'm cooking for all these people. I'm putting on an apron, I'm buying the food and I'm gonna cook because I want them to know for me. And I think they know because I see them every day. They know how I feel about the work that they do here, but I want to show them. And I think you would have grabbed an apron and come show them to, and help cook for the, for the
I can cook, I'm just, you know.
I'll cook. You know, so in, in closing, all I want to say is, is I've, I've opened up schools here in Hackenberg at every level, every capacity for the last 17 years. And I guarantee you on day one, we're ready to rock and roll here. So, you know, we can thank, like I said, through all the adversity that we've had, staff shortages, reconfiguration of buildings, you know, I mean, just general life. People need time off, they need vacation, they have sick kids, you know? We gotta, and, you know, but, but the people who are here, they work their tails off. They work their tails off to get to where we are and they need to be recognized every day. And that's all I have for my building.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Mr. Norman?
Alright, good evening, everyone. So this is gonna be our first technology update in a while. Uh, we've been pretty streamlined since we went one-to-one with COVID, um, over two years ago. We've been operating pretty much the same one-to-one system the entire time. We did not collect student devices last summer. This summer we did. This was the first time uh, in two years that we've collected devices, reevaluated our inventory. We wanted to take a look at our spend, you know, and the sustainability of our one-to-one initiative. So tonight I want to give you an update on some of the successes, the challenges, and some of the steps that we want to take to move forward and make sure that we can sustain our technology program. So we're gonna start with some of our successes. Um, for the last two years, we've had 6,600-plus student-issued device, devices in use, you know, every student, in every student's hand, you know? Almost 100 hotspots in the hands of students who are McKinvento. We have sponsored about 150 families with Comcast Internet Service. Uh, and we've maintained it all with, up until last month, we've maintained it all with nine and a half technicians. Um, we didn't even have a technician in every building, but we were able to pull it off and, you know, keep it going. Uh, our annual spend to maintain our inventory without loss is about a million dollars a year, and we use Title I funding for that. We have a plan to replace first grade, fifth grade, and ninth grade devices annually. So every four years, um, which is a lifespan of a typical device, we are renewing our fee. And this was the plan. This is our sustainable use of funding to maintain the initiative. Now granted, this is all without loss, without excessive damage. So now we're gonna go on and talk about some of the challenges that we had along the way. Just last year, when I ran the numbers the other day, we did over 2,000 repairs. And that's just on the book repairs where we sent a device to Dell. They've repaired it and sent it back. We did a lot of in-house repairs if we have parts or pieces. So, you know, we're really pushing well over 2,000 repairs a year. We have had multiple repair and replacement incidents per student. We have never implemented a limit on the number of repairs a student could have. We never wanted to have any barrier to a student being able to, you know, whether they were at home and they needed to make, uh, you know, go to their class online via Zoom. We didn't want that to be a barrier for any of our students. But we do realize that, you know, we do have some scenarios where, you know, a student may be on their ninth or 10th device. Um, and that's just the reality that we've been dealing with. So, you know, that was a challenge for us. So in May, we started advertising that we were gonna be collecting devices this year um, as part of our federal audit. Any devices purchased with federal funds need to be audited and inventoried by us at least once every two years. So this was the year. Our return rate as of the end of July was only 68.8%. So when you're talking about 6,500 students, 6,800 students, that's 2,000 devices still at home. And, you know, as part of that, and I'll show you some numbers here in a moment, the lowest rate of return was on the most expensive devices, which is the high school devices. The high school laptops cost about three times as much as the K-8 Chromebooks. So you know, as part of that challenge, we have a difficult predictability of replacement and accessory spend. We lose a lot of chargers. You know, even a charger, 25, 30, $35, depending on uh, the time of year that we place the order. So at the end of the day, for 2022, our current projected loss, this is assuming we don't get any device back, is about $1.2 million. Now, that being said, we just put 1,800 letters in the mail last week. And we have already started receiving some devices back. It was just a reminder to families. You know, we did collect devices this year. We need to get them ready for next school year. Please bring them back to your school or the Lincoln Administration Building so we can get them ready. And we are starting to receive some of them back. So we're hopeful that we get a good portion of them back, either before school or, you know, students show up with them on the first day of school. So those are our challenges. And, you know, just so everyone knows, if you hadn't seen, we had posters on every building, we post on the district website, social media, Facebook. Um, we sent out phone calls, the teachers in the classrooms had collection sheets, so we did try a lot of avenues to let everyone know well in advance that we were collecting this year. And we still, you know, 68%. Um, these are just some statistics. This is outstanding devices by building. And I don't know, maybe just the two, two of the big, larger percentage buildings, building number five is Foose. Building 26 is Roland, building 30 is John Harris. It's just some of the buildings where we got less devices back. The orange are, is the percentage of students that still have the device. So that's kind of where we were at by building. And then this is the same chart but by grade. And you'll really notice ninth grade, 10th grade, those are all the students with the $980 laptops. And that, that's the biggest portion of devices we didn't get back. So that's some of the statistics. So we wanted to come up with a plan to move forward. Um, we're seeking the community, parents, guardians as partners in the care of technology. Uh, we really are. Uh, we are gonna be rolling out this year a new technology use agreement that basically has I want to say a little more teeth to it, but a little more basically a way to make sure that all of our families and community know that we're partners in this. We want you to care about this as much as we do. So we're gonna be rolling that out this year. I'll give you some details. We are implementing a reasonable fee schedule for lost devices and repairs. So we've been talking to other districts, especially other urban districts, to see what they've been doing for, you know, about this issue. And we looked at, you know, some of the fees that they're charging for damage and repairs. And I'm gonna show you what, you know, our plan for that is moving forward. Um, we are gonna revise the one-to-one program a little bit. We're gonna talk about what that looks like K-8, what it looks like 9 to 12. And basically, we just want a sustainable platform for our technology moving forward. And can't see it at the bottom there, but we want to make sure that all of these processes and all these procedures and communications are clear. We don't want ambiguity, you know, families don't know, you know, what they were supposed to do, what the agreement is between them. So here are some of the revisions of our one-to-one program that we are, you know, thinking about implementing and really planning on this year. So for HVLA, there'll be no change whatsoever. Every device, every student still has the device they need it for their online programming. K-8, uh, we're planning for the devices to remain in computer charging carts that we purchase for every school uh, in the classroom. Ninth through 12th grade devices will be issued to students at the discretion of the principal based upon curricular needs or assignments. Uh, obviously, unique situations evaluated on a case-by-case basis by the building principal. You know, and we want to have some flexibility with that. If we have to go out for some reason, you know, we'll have some flexibility. If, if students need to sign out a device for some uh, particular reason, they're gonna be out of the building for a few days, you know, that'll all be at the discretion of the principal. And then at the bottom, you'll see the proposed fee schedule. Um, and this is the same as some other districts that we've talked to. Uh, $200 for a lost device and charger, $175 for a lost device or where there is evidence of clear or willful destruction of a device, $50 for a damaged device, broken screen, uh, missing keys, damage from drops, burns, parts, and then $25 for a loser, lost or broken charger. Uh, we think these fees are, you know, pretty much in line with what other districts are doing. And we want to point out when this happens, you know, if an HVLA student loses or damages a device, we are going to give them the new device. We're not gonna let them miss their education. But we are gonna be invoicing the family. So this is the fee schedule. And that's all I have. Any questions?
On the fee schedule, does that affect also like, uh, their graduation? They may have to pay that for graduation?
I'll answer that. Um, that is not something that we have discussed yet. I do have practice with holding, not, not letting a, a student graduate, but not issuing the diploma until the fee is paid. Uh, but it is something, you know, as an administration, we want to make sure we're all on the same page, discuss them all in favor of.
But that pretty much covered my question. That was, uh, pretty much my question was if a parent chose not to pay, what would be the consequences of that? And that was one of the things I was very excited to give. Was that something that we can go? Um, also, uh, I want to thank you because accountability needs to be held on every end of the spectrum, from the top down, from the down to the top. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, I just have one thing to say about the, this, this may be more an administration issue, but there's the this is what everybody does the power thing that we have. It, I just wanted it to flow. It says we have the, the equipment fee schedule for lost devices, things like that. But on the other page, it says that if, uh, it says that I am legally responsible for the repair, depreciation cost of the equipment, equipment if it's lost, stolen, damaged, or seized while in my possession. For each of those, if it's lost, there is a fee for that. If it's damaged, there is a fee for that. I'm not sure what you mean by seized while in my possession possibly by the police, but under stolen, it says here that you have to pay that depreciation cost. You can't control what someone else does to that equipment, but now is it that right underneath it to file the police report? And then they're not responsible for that for, for that, um, device if it's stolen with an accompanying police report? Because everything else in there has, has a cost if it, if it happens, except under stolen.
Right, and I appreciate you pointing all that out. So this is a draft agreement. I wanted the board to see it before we reveal any of this out. Um, so I'm thankful for that. I think we can take out the depreciation cost since we have the clear fee schedule. I think we do need to talk about whether when a police report is filed, or for example, if a family loses their house to a fire, you know? We need to have reasonable exceptions, I think, for those scenarios. So I think we do need to talk about that. One of the things that we did have an issue with this year is when devices were stolen or lost, um, we did have some families that did not want to file a police report. But at the same time, we need that documentation for when we have, go through a federal audit. So we need, we need the police report. So we at least need the parents to know. Even if you, even if it was lost in a fire, we need, at least need a report number or something that we can use in an audit to, uh,
So if they, so if they don't do that, then they're actually opting to pay the replacement cost of the device or the, or what's on this fee schedule. If they're not filing a police report, then that's, that's basically a letting to go by what this fee schedule says. Okay, and, um, I just wanted to say I am, I am thrilled at this. I, I know a lot of the IT department and I know you guys are we're overwhelmed where children are deliberately destroying the, the devices and there's no accountability for it. And I am all for if this is a continual thing, if you're, you're going through seven, eight devices in one school year, that's absolutely ridiculous. But if there is that accountability, if you're being charged $200 per device, yes, I do agree, at the end of the time, not to stop their education, but when it's time for, let them know every year, hey, this is what's on your child's account. But when it's time for, let them know every year, hey, this is what's on your child's account because of this. So there is no surprise come graduation, but I don't know. So, but I am, I'm absolutely all for this.
Thank you.
Just wanted to, uh, raise a couple of questions, not really directed towards IT because I agree with what Daniel just said. Um, the rate of return and whatnot, those statistics are not surprising, but sad. Being a parent and seeing my daughters and middle school students. Um, the amount of homework that she had that required the use of a computer to enter it into the Google classroom or document or read something that was given to the students technologically. This will have an effect possibly on what. We spend in the classroom for those resources if we're not sending the laptops home all the time. Um. Is that? Part of the plan, like it's kind of understood, but it's not going to be done anymore.
Yeah. And I don't know if Dr. Steve wants to comment at all, but. The principals and the teachers also have the discretion. If, if there's going to be an assignment where, you know, the computer is going to be required. The teachers have a discretion through the principal to sign them out to the students, you know, overnight for a week. Um, and recollect them and, and re-inventor them back into the classroom cart.
Oh, and I, I, I get that. It's. It's just thinking about, like, I help her with her homework like every day. So the, the great minds resources, I know they're on paper and stuff like that, but a lot of the ELA and social studies stuff, they were using digital versions, which saved us on paper. A whole lot because they could just read digitally, write digitally and turn it in. But this is the other side of that coin. And it is a real.
It is.
Reality.
I have one more question. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I made a note here. When we're talking about lost or stolen items, do we have an, an ability to track? The device?
So with the K to eight Chromebooks, we can disable it. No one will be able to use a device whatsoever. We did that as soon as the year ended this year and we got hundreds and hundreds of them back right away. Uh, we didn't get them all, did not get them all.
Okay. And actually that, but that's when I literally wrote down, it has to be technology to shut everything down. So that we're, we're only using it on the Chromebooks. It's not available on the.
We don't have it on the high school computers. Um, years ago, we had an agreement with a company called Absolute Computrace. Um, basically when a device is lost or stolen, we could file a police report. The police work directly with Computrace. To investigate, they can GPS locate, they can take screenshots, photos and work. They won't work with us. They'll work with the police to recover the device. If they don't recover it within, I believe ninety days. Um, we would get so much of a credit for the cost of the device. But we were spending upwards of a hundred dollars per device. And our return on investment, the number we would report per year was so low and. So often, even though the full investigation went through, they wouldn't recover the device. Um, I mean, so at that time, it really didn't make fiscal sense for us to continue throwing money for this license. That we weren't utilizing and weren't getting an ROI on. Um, perhaps now we can look at the numbers of. Lost PCs that we didn't get back. Um, and maybe do those calculations again and see if it makes sense now that we're, you know, we do have. Uh, a thousand plus high school devices, uh, signed out.
And then one more question and then I'm, I'm done. So I know you're probably tired of hearing of me, but the, um. You said every two years we do, you have to, to get those devices back. So now this being the second year. The. I don't know how I'm going to say the, the seniors that are going on now. I know a few years ago when we did have some of the devices. Some of the seniors that were going into college, we didn't have anything going on. So we allowed them to, to take those devices onto college. Because we were already going to be replacing. Those devices anyway, because they were kind of end of life, but they actually had something to get them started with in college. So are we, do we have anything in place with that?
Well, and that was written in as kind of part of this plan with the four year replacement cycle. At the end of the fourth year, they get recycled. The problem we're going to run into, and just to be completely honest, is. That only happens when a device means we keep a device in active service for four years. We're losing thirty percent of our devices every year. That means. A lot of our devices aren't even getting to two, three years old. So we're going to have a real issue maintaining a program like that.
What about the, the ones that maybe towards the end of life, having those ones available to seniors, if those, those are the ones that are going to be replaced anyway. And kind of keep those, it's just an idea thrown out there, but since you're the technology guy.
Well, we're two years, we're two years in, so we have two years to figure out what that's going to look like and see how many devices we actually have left. Um, and then we can, you know. Determine what we're gonna, what needs to be recycled because it's broken or what we actually have to give out and we want, you know. I, I don't think we want to pick and choose which graduating seniors get. It would be lovely if. You know, we could do that across the board, but we'll see what the numbers look like.
The one factor in using federal money to purchase these devices, we have much stricter standards when it comes to. Disposing of these devices or in theory giving them to students at the end. So. Part of the factor of using Title One and then also supplementing with S or, or these stricter restrictions that we're now faced with. Where we may not be able to be as flexible in giving those devices out at the end.
Uh, question. So besides, uh, rolling in HVLA, more students actually need to take the computers home?
I think it's going to be at the discretion of the principal. Uh, I think there might be certain programs or courses where the students might need it. Um, I believe SciTech will probably continue. A lot of their coursework is strictly dependent on that. Um, but HVLA and possibly Roland, if devices are needed for, uh, the humanities courses. Um, I think that's what we're looking at right now.
Uh, Mr. Nelson, I appreciate you telling us this because this don't make you feel good. This isn't cost effective.
We want it to be sustainable.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, but it, you know, if you're. You know, they always can calculate to the Dr. Stokes to tell you. Great at that, you know, is banks, when you go in there, get a loan. You know, they look at your cost, the income ratio. All the time to see if you follow. Well, if we're putting a device out there. Devices coming back or for whatever reason it got lost in cyberspace. That's not cost effective. And you're talking about how many school buildings versus how many students. You know, and it's nice that the feds picked up the cost, but at some point we're going to pick up the cost. You know, do these parents. Speak, because you can't hold the kid. Fine and a memorandum of responsibility.
Yep. So the draft.
All explained into them that this device costs nine hundred and some odd dollars. And if it is lost or stolen or whatever. Oh, your house, you know, whatever, you gotta start holding somebody accountable. You can't keep that up.
I agree. And that's a good point. Even though our fee schedule starts at two hundred dollars for a device and charger, some of the devices are nine hundred and eighty plus dollars. So. Yeah, eve- even this is a deal, but it's a start in the right direction.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
In, in a lot of ways, this isn't, it's not my area of expertise is, uh. But the idea that a child, uh, in the Harrisburg School District couldn't be trusted with a textbook. And when I started on the board here ten years ago, as I would hear these stories, I would say, well, we don't let our kids take the textbook home. And the reason for that is we lose a lot of textbooks. But when a child from Harrisburg does not take a textbook home. Uh, he's still. Or she still is going to have to compete with that child from Susquehanna Township. Or from Cumberland Valley or from West Shore. When it comes time to gain admission to college. And, um. I know that the, the economics of this don't, uh, look good. Uh, but the alternative here is, is if that computer is the modern day textbook is, let's be cautious about. Uh, a philosophy in the school district where the tool is, the child needs to learn. That sixty eight percent of them have been responsible to bring the tool back on a regular basis and turn it in on time. Those sixty eight percent of students, if they can't take that. Computer home and that's the tool that they need for whatever dual enrollment attack or. Uh, Harrisburg University. Would just suggest that we find ways to tweak the system in a way that we don't have the modern day equivalent of. Forget it, kid. You can't take the textbook home to do your homework anymore because we're afraid you won't bring it back. Cause I think it disadvantages our children in their competition against their peers.
I completely agree. I don't know if Mr. Termin want to speak to that.
Yeah, I will. And, um, that's, uh. One of the reasons why we really put in there at the discretion of the building leader and building principal. So take an example of the thirty students who may be doing dual enrollment for Harrisburg University at John Harris. It'll be the discretion of the building principal to look at the situation and say, for those students, yes, they can sign a Chromebook out and use that each and every day. Um, it's really going to be the accountability for the parent, the student. And then some of that will shift and be in joined together with the classroom teacher, who is then also signing that out and be able to have a, 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 a system in terms of. Making sure when it goes out and when it comes back. So how do you create, create a system of accountability? For the Chrome, for the Chromebook or the laptop for, for all of the students, but also know that if a student needs a device. That there's the opportunity for that student to get one. So, uh, we definitely would not exclude any student. We definitely need to take that device home.
Good question. What would be a penalty for a student, um. Who does it becomes of a turn of cycle? So this ain't the first time that they lost a laptop, but this is not the first time they returned there. What are some of the penalties that they will face if this is becoming a recurring issue?
I don't know that we're that far down the road yet. And I guess, you know, a lot of it depends on whether the fees are paid as well. Um, maybe we need a limit on.
Yeah. And I can just comment on some of the other districts that have this fee schedule. Um, to be very honest with you, um, they. Were quick to tell Mr. Nolan Holm and myself that, that their collection rate was not high as well. Um, that's just being very transparent. So, um, we can put this in place. Um, which we will come together and come up with, with the process and what we want to do, but. You know, from talking to other districts that do this is their collection rate is not like, it's like fifty percent. It's probably anywhere in the area of ten to twenty percent in terms of the collection rate when it comes to the, to finances and. People paying for, uh, the lost or stolen, um, Chromebooks. So, um, just something we have to understand that. You know, we can put this in place, but at the end of the day, I don't think we can be expecting that we're going to give X, um, just being very transparent.
Any other questions?
Hey, I'm not, I don't want to be that mean girl, but, um. When you talk, when you're talking about the, being accountable and only having a ten percent, um, collection. If that. Carries with their student onto the, the high school level. Getting and withholding that diploma. It may not just be about withholding that diploma because that child that they're, they're actually going into college, they're going to need their transcript sent. They're going to need letters of recommendation. They're going to need a whole lot of things. And I know it's not about punishing that child, but that parent. Has to be held. To account because of. If they're signing this, this contract, which is exactly what it is, it means you have. This. Property about that belongs to the district, you have not returned it and, and then. Not doing that, it affects your child's life. So it wouldn't be a bad thing on the district. Like, no, we're trying to collect our things so that our children. The next child can use it or use it for education. Withhold. That's just. Not just the, the diploma, but the records. And I don't want to be mean with that, but it's just, it is what it is. We can't keep putting out a million dollars or one point two million a year. In. Just technology is, is not feasible. We, we just can't do it. So there has to be something in place in order for us to, to correct.
We will definitely take the information we received this evening. Uh, we will sit down as administrative staff and then we'll have something to report out to on the twenty third very quickly.
They. Don't have the two hundred dollars, but want to make some kind of arrangement. Issue them another notebook while.
Yes. Absolutely. Yeah. We don't want to get in the way of their education by not issuing a device.
What if the next textbook, well, the next notebook you gave them, they lost that one. And they owe another two.
I think that's part of the discussion that we need to have. And it's all, you know, thank you, everybody for this exact conversation, because this is kind of. The guidance that we need to make this something that's going to work for us. So it's something we have to discuss for sure. Thank you, everyone.
And the last, uh, information item, we're going to get a very quick update on transportation, uh, by Dr. Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Turman. Just to let everybody in the community and the board know, um, the transportation department has been actively working on routing all of our students. Um, we started with our non-public schools first because most of their start dates are advanced in. Come before our own start date. So those letters started going out to those parents this week. We will be starting our letters to our parents with bus routes, starting on August fifteenth. They will start going in the mail. One thing that is crucial, um, is that we need to make sure we have the most updated address for our parents. Because if they've moved or relocated over the summer, haven't told the school district, we're routing their bus stop based on last year's address. And so we want to make sure we get all kids to and from school efficiently and safely. So please encourage. Families, especially those that have relocated to update their address with the school district as soon as possible. Secondly, you'll notice on the agenda, there's a long list of drivers, van drivers, bus drivers, aides on your approval this evening. Our two contractors, Craft and Voyo have been actively trying to recruit drivers throughout this whole summer. Hosting job fairs out at National Night Out, having our buses in our parking lots. Um, indicating that they're hiring. We are in a better position starting this year when it comes to having routes filled than what we ended last year. As of Friday, we have eleven bus routes that still are not covered. Last year we ended with eighteen. Now, mind you, we will be sure every child gets picked up, but it might be at a different bus number. There might be some doubling up of runs. Um, but we are actively working with our contractors to try to get all routes covered. So the best thing we can do is make sure we have the most up to date contact information for our families. We have the most up to date addresses. So our routes can be. Done as efficiently as possible. We're going to be evaluating, of course, every route this year, especially with our fifth grade move to say, do we need the same number of buses at each building last year as we have this year? And trying our best to make sure we get consistent transportation for everybody in the district. But we all need to help play our part. So just encouraging families to keep their information updated as timely as possible with the district.
Thank you, Dr. Stokes. And I just want to go back and reiterate, uh, in terms of the addresses. Uh, being here last school year, one of the biggest issues was, um, students being dropped off. On the first day of school at the wrong address and that was the address that was in the system. So, um, Mrs. Keys and I. Uh, are going to have to work together in terms of, from a communication standpoint, uh, to make sure we continually push out the message. It is very critical and important for parents to please come into the school and update, uh, their, their new address if they've moved over the summer. All right. Any questions on transportation for Dr. Stokes? All right, Mr. Nolan Hold, if you can just very quickly talk about, talk through your three agenda items.
So I only have a few tonight. Um, the first one is an agreement with Power School Group LLC for an E-School Plus report card customization. Um, this is just a, a minor annual fee of four seventy six ninety eight. Um, and this is just so that our elementary report card, uh, looks the way we want it to look. Um. It, it, we have a few customizations that aren't stock out of E-School Plus, which is our student information system. Uh, the second one is our annual renewal with Securely for student internet filtering services. For the period of nine, one, twenty two through eight, thirty, one, twenty three. Total cost is twenty seven thousand, four hundred. Um, general fund as well on that. And that is so. Um, as part of the Children's Internet Protection Act, we have to provide internet filtering in the district when we went one to one. Because they're still district owned or leased devices, we also need to provide that same kind of internet filtering at home. Um, and Securely also, uh, gives us some extra features such as alerting, um, counselors and principals when students are searching for things like. Um, self-harm, uh, violence, weapons, hate, things like that. Our counselors get alerts and then they can pull the students in and have those conversations or. Reach out to parents as needed. Reach out to parents as needed. Um, and finally, uh recommend ratification of a purchase with Eco York LLC. For fifty hours of web development services to support HBLA attendance automation. Since the HBLA students are doing a lot of their work asynchronously, uh we did struggle last year with having even some of the manpower to. Go back and review the work that the students did on any given day of the week. Um, and then retroactively adjust their attendance to say whether they were present that day, did they log in, did they complete work? Um, so we're working with this company to basically build up a very simple app. Where when the HBLA students log into their computer for the day, they're gonna go to this site and say. I'm I'm logged in for the day. I'm getting started with my work, and it's gonna automate the attendance directly into e-school so that we can account for their uh work that day.
Any questions for Mr. Nolan? Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Next, we will have Mr. Glass uh as a few agenda items for facilities.
Thanks again. Uh, under facilities, item number one, um, I recommend a contract with Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated. For roof replacement restoration at Hamilton School. The scope of work is for total replacement of roof areas A, B, C, and D, which is twenty-four thousand ninety-eight square feet. And restoration of roof area E, which is five thousand nine hundred and eighty-one square feet, as well as repairs to the chimney. This project will commence when the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year ends. This project will be a twenty-year solution and come with preventative maintenance at years two, five, ten, and fifteen. Total cost is one million, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. And the funding, funding source will be the Capital Reserve Fund. Item number two, I also recommend a contract with Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated. For roof restoration at the Lincoln Cougar Academy Building. The scope of work is for the restoration to roof areas D, D one and D two, which is eight thousand eight hundred and square feet. Project will be completed this fall. This project will be a twenty-year solution and come with preventative maintenance also at years two, five, ten, and fifteen. Total cost, one hundred and forty-five thousand dollar, uh, one hundred forty-five thousand ninety-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, funding source will also be the Capital Reserve. Um, item number three, recommend a contract with Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated for roof restoration at Melrose School. The scope of work is for restoration to roof areas A through N at fifty-one thousand four hundred and fourteen square feet. This project will be started this fall and completed in the spring if necessary. Project will be a twenty-year solution. And also comes with preventative mains at years two, five, ten, and fifteen. Total cost is seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. And the funding source uh will be the Capital Reserve Fund. Uh, item number four is recommend a contract with Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated for roof restoration at Roland School. The scope of work for the restoration of roof areas A, A one, B one, B three, B four. C, C one, C two, C three, C four, D and E. Well, which consists of thirty thousand three hundred and seventy-four square feet. This project will be started this fall and completed in the spring if necessary. Project will be a twenty-year solution, also comes with preventive maintenance at years two, five, ten, and fifteen. Total cost is five hundred and sixty-three thousand, eighty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, Capital Reserve will be the funding source. Item number five, I recommend approval of a proposal with Mammoth Restoration. This proposal is for remediation services at the Lincoln Cougar Academy Building Basement. Scope of, the scope of work is for complete remediation services for the presence of mold due to a leaking foundation wall. Total cost is ninety-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Uh, funding source, Capital Reserve. Um, item number six, I approve the ratification of an undate, an updated appraisal for one thousand and one North Eighteenth Street. Harrisburg PA, also known as the Woodward Property. Uh, the cost is four thousand dollars and paid from the general fund. And item number seven, uh, prove the ratification of an appraisal for nineteen and one Wayne Avenue in Sessom, Hannah Township. The cost is six thousand five hundred dollars and paid for from the general firm.
Any questions for Mr. Glass for the facilities section?
Just a quick one, what's the the reason for the the need for an updated um appraisal for the properties?
It's my understanding that there is interest in the Woodward property again, so they need to get an updated proposal to get a a updated appraisal because. I I don't remember the exact year it was done, but I think it's outdated.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to know why we needed one. It it what about the the Wayne Avenue?
It's my understanding that we never had a formal appraisal done. And if we're looking forward to do, uh, if we're looking to do something with the property, we need to know what that cost is.
Thank you. Mr. Glass, if you can quickly do food service and transportation?
Okay, under food service, um, item number one, I recommend ratification of a purchase with Jolly Technologies for ID flow software licensing. And support to update district student ID badging workstations. Total cost is nine thousand six hundred dollars. Funding source is the. Food service one, okay? Recur call at me. Recommend approval of a, an item number two, recommend approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three contracts to purchase meals from schools. At a per meal price of two dollars and fifty cents for breakfast and four dollars and seventy-five cents for lunch for the following purchasing sponsors. Saint Stevens Episcopal School, Logos Academy, Capital Area School for the Arts, Nativity School, and Capital Academy.
Any questions on food service? And transportation?
This is a short one. Uh, recommend approval of the attached list of bus drivers, van drivers, and aides for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Any questions?
Hearing none, Madam Secretary, I would kindly ask that items B, C, D, and E, all items as listed. Be put on the consent agenda for August twenty-third approval.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Suski. We will now shift to the Office of Business Services with Dr. Marcia Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Turman. I'm gonna focus this evening's discussion on items A, C. And H. However, I will entertain obviously any questions on out any of the agenda items. Item A is an approval of grant award. So part of the uh final budget that was approved um at the state level. Provides each school district in the Commonwealth with safety and mental health grants. We will be the recipient of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars for physical safety. And the same amount for our mental health grants. Both of these grants just opened August first. Ms. Peters is working to submit them by the August thirty-first deadline, and we wanna recognize those additional funds coming into the school district. For those grants. Item B is the normal treasures report that is updated each month. This is for the period ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. A general fund has a cash balance of forty-two million, six hundred twenty-three thousand, nine, four hundred ninety-seven dollars. What I'd like to spend some time discussing is the next item, which is a ratification of funds transfers. As you heard through this evening, we have mentioned a health insurance trust fund, probably something new that you have not heard before. Because we are self-insured for medical, prescription, vision, dental, and workers' compensation. One of the things we're trying to do is make sure our accounting is accurately reflecting where all of our funds should be reported. In the past, these types of expenditures have come out of our general fund, and that's not quite appropriate. So that is why we have opened and established a health insurance trust fund to properly account and record. For all of our self-insured plans. So as you will see in item C, we're recommending some transfers. One of them is two hundred and fifty thousand. That is going for our workers' compensation reserve. Because we are self-funded, we need to have a reserve set by the state. To allow us to remain self-funded, so we're moving those funds into that self-insured bucket. In addition, with our medical plan, we need to be sure that we have a proper reserve in place. Because claims that come in are our responsibility to cover. It is recommended that we have at least three months' worth of average claims sitting in a reserve. We never know when claims might be higher or lower in any given month, and we need to make sure we're fiscally responsible for our self-insured medical plan. So therefore, uh, a ratification of a two million dollar transfer from the general fund to that health insurance trust fund to make sure we're building up. Our reserve in that to cover our claims for our plans. In addition, you heard Mr. uh Glass report on various projects coming out of our Capital Reserve Fund. You will see two transfers that are being ratified, one of them in the amount of five million dollars. And this really is to make sure we're maintaining compliance with the Public School Code regarding our on-assign fund balance for fiscal year twenty-one. And the second one is moving from fund balance that was assigned to capital projects to our actual capital reserve. So what has been presented between Severance Field that was approved, also all of our security camera upgrades and all of our roofs. Is a significant amount of money coming from Capital Reserve. We need to make sure we're not only obviously paying for those expenses that have been approved, but we're also doing long-term planning. We will not be in an area or ability to borrow for quite some time, and we're going through a master plan development. So it's going to be important that we evaluate and build up our Capital Reserve Fund over time to be sure we're able to cover all the expenses that we need. Before we're able to do major renovation projects through debt service issuances. So are any questions on the ratification of funds? I wanna make sure you all know the date that it's six-thirty twenty-one. The audit that we have not yet received and hopeful we be presented next board meeting.
Just one uh question. It seemed to me you're for under ratification of transfer of funds. You're transferring from the general fund. For the purpose of a worker's compensation reserve. But it says that you're transferring it to Fund Sixty for Health Insurance Fund. Is that correct?
That is correct. That fund, Fund Sixty is a proprietary fund or a service fund. So all of our self-insured plans, which are medical, dental, vision, prescription, and workers' comp can all be together in one fund. There's not a necessary reason to separate them because they're all considered self-funded.
And these will start to appear on our annual audit that these funds will be audited. So that we can monitor as the years go by. And this doesn't say, but what is the required uh? Health insurance fund. How much do we have to get in there total? Is this enough money?
That is not enough money to meet the total of the three-year or three-month claims, which is really a industry-wide recommended standard. Um, so right now, we have average claims of about twelve million dollars a year, so it gets us towards that three-month mark. But not necessarily meeting that three-month claims history, but it is building towards that.
But you and three million is the number you're trying to hit?
At least, yes. You're welcome. My next section D appears on each agenda. This is just the ratification of accounts payable checks that have occurred since our last board meeting. Similarly, E is just the ratification of the payrolls that occurred in July. Repository bids do attend to appear at most agendas. These are bids uh to basically put our properties back. Onto our tax rolls. And G is both ratification and approval of facilities used um by the various entities wishing to use our facilities. I do wanna focus our attention on item H. As you all are aware, we approved our twenty-two, twenty-three budget before the state approved their twenty-two, twenty-three budget. What I wanted to do was provide both transparency and a plan to recognize that we did receive additional revenues. That were not in our budget that the state provided through subsidies when they adopted their budget. As you can see, we are receiving additional two million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars in basic education funding. So on our revenues, we'd like to do an adjustment to recognize that additional revenue. Similarly, on our special education funding, we are receiving additional five hundred and nineteen thousand, fifty-eight dollars. I would like to make that revenue adjustment to recognize that additional revenue. In addition, we have the health and safety grants that I just mentioned on item A that were not known at the time that we developed our budget. I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of those revenue sources. So basically, our revenue budget is increasing by three million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. To make sure our balance, our budget is balanced, and I don't know at this point in time exactly how we're going to be utilizing those additional funds. I want to also amend the expenditure side of the budget, acknowledging those additional funds by adjusting our budgetary reserve. By that amount of the three million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So what I'm asking to you to do is approve an amendment to the budget to have transparency. And to allow us to account for those additional revenue sources as a result of the state budget adoption. There are any questions on that motion?
Right here. You said that under the safety grants, under the original budget, there were zero, but under the amended budget, there's a four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Three hundred and fifty-four. Now, but you said that that includes the grants that we just, that you just mentioned.
Correct. Those are the ones in item A um that were the safety and mental health grants.
Okay, but those numbers don't, don't add up.
Those grants did not exist at the time that we developed the budget, so we're asking to acknowledge those revenue sources.
Right, I understand that, but if you're going at two hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-seven for a safety grant, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty. Seventy-seven for the health grant, that doesn't total four hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
I can check into that. Um, I believe that the grant motion is transpose on item A. Which is two eighteen, six seventy-seven, not two eight, one, six seventy-seven.
Okay, so it's supposed to be two eighteen. Okay. I was gonna say it didn't, it it didn't add up there. Okay. So, but that amount. That's something that there's, yeah, so that will work out before, right, so it'd be four, thirty-seven, three fifty-four. If that was the two.
Two eighteen, six seventy-seven.
Six seven, seven, okay. Just, yeah, so.
Good catch, Miss Robson. Thank you. Okay, and the last item under Office of Business Services is we do have a recommendation to approve a stipulation. In joint motion order for a property that the assessed value um was appealed. Um, for our solicitor, we are, he is recommending the, we agree with the county's um. Kind of motion to settle the case to adjust the assessed value. Because this was filed in tax year twenty-one, we will not be required to issue a refund of previous year's taxes paid on this property.
Hearing no further questions. Oh, I'm sorry.
On that particular pop property, is it gonna be reassessed now that there is a courthouse there?
This is a condo located within the building. It is not where you think it is.
But it's across the street from.
It's across the street, and it only is one unit within the physical building.
Oh, I didn't get that from the, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, hearing no further questions.
I have a question too. Uh, with the use of facilities, right, where is the cost uh not available? Um, who covered the cost for these events? And some of them are already to place.
So in our facilities use policy, they spell out based on the type of organization, what the fee schedule is. So not applicable would be that they fit within a category that the board through their policy has decided we do not charge for the use of facilities.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, Madam Secretary, I would ask that we move item A uh to the consent agenda with the correction to two eighteen, six seventy-seven, please. For each of those two grants, I would also ask that items B. C. H. Be listed separately as motions on the agenda. And then item D, E, F. G. And I can be listed as consent.
Noted. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Suski. We're now gonna go to the Office of the Superintendent. And the first motion I have is a very happy one. Um, we are going to approve the. Three hundred and thirty-seven graduates of John Harris Cougar Academy and also SciTech. So congratulations to all the graduates uh proving them tonight. I I am gonna go out of order here. I have a young man who is just going to give us a quick five-minute elevator pitch. I, I am going to go out of order here. I have a young man who is just going to give us a quick five-minute elevator pitch. Um, we are moving forward with something at John Harris called University Startups. And uh, Mr. Tremaine Davis is here to talk about it very briefly. And just kind of give somebody's, give everyone some information on what it is, but we're very excited for the opportunity uh, that it will bring the students to John Harris.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turman. Honored to be here. This is a great environment, just meeting everybody. So university startups, e-learning platform focused on social entrepreneurship, college readiness, workforce development. And what we do is we really, really, really try to work with communities. That's why this is such a great place to be tonight. I've enjoyed just listening and really getting to know everything that's going on here in Harrisburg. But uh, what we do is we really like to align ourselves and what we're doing, not just as an e-learning platform, but as an empowerment tool for the people that are doing the work. We want to support all of the work that's being done here and also act as a glue, if you will, for other work that can be done in the community. So we want to be the, the, I don't know, like the, the, the support tool. The, the not, a dynamic support tool. That's what we are. So we know that our success in this community depends on the conversation that we have with you all, people that are doing the work. We like to make sure that our platform becomes more tightly aligned with the needs of the community. And that comes from conversations that we've been having with, like, Mr. Turman and uh, uh, the principal, um, Principal Felton met with her today. Uh, she has such a great energy and such a great fire for the things she's doing over at John Harris. Um, but these are the things that become really important for our success. And we are taking that of the utmost importance. So just want to share a little bit.
All right, any questions very quickly for Mr. Davis? Davis, thank you for staying with us for three hours.
No, it's amazing. It's amazing. It's amazing. This is what we do.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any others? Uh, I will talk about is uh, convocation event. I'm very excited to announce that um, we are going to have our convocation event for all staff members at the F and B Field at City Island, City Island. Uh, that will be uh, starting at eight o'clock, or actually the doors will open at seven. Uh, but we are going to usher in the new year a little bit differently this year. And uh, uh, the Harrisburg Foundation has agreed to pay for that event for us. Uh, Dr. Moore, Barbara Moore Williams will be continuing her cultural proficiency training uh, for the next school year. Uh, she is now going to expand. She's been working with the leadership uh, for the past two years. Now going to expand that to leadership teams. I'm also supporting the leadership team, but how they can support their staff and also starting to work with support staff as well. The twenty-two, twenty-three prom, uh, this is a ratification uh, because we already had to send the initial payment in July. Um, but this is just making sure uh, that we have a spot uh, for the twenty-two, twenty-three prom at the Best Western Hotel and Conference Center. And then the last thing is the approval for the school year is the resolution for the PDE emergency instructional time waiver form. Um, and that includes the uh, the adjusted schedule that we have to do for Roland Academy. Are there any questions for me or in terms of my agenda items?
I'd like to go back to F to the, the individual that just presented. What are some things that you guys do? And have you guys uh, been in any other schools uh, besides coming into John Harris, uh, besides going to Harrisburg School?
Yeah, what was the first question? I'm sorry, I was walking up.
Oh, uh, the first question is what are, uh, what exactly is everything that you do at your organization?
Oh, do, okay, yeah, absolutely. Um, so we, so the second question, that's an easy one. Yeah, so we're in multiple schools. Our, our, our philosophy is really about community. So it's not just about schools, it's about community, I mean, organizations that serve a community. So we work with community colleges, work with universities, work with schools and school districts, charter schools, uh, libraries. You know, libraries make really good partners because they're community, partners that are anchored in community. So we work right now in Washington DC, also in Maryland where we're based. We also work in Virginia, Tennessee, uh, New York, and working on some stuff in Florida um, right now. Then of course, um, here in Harrisburg. Um, so what we do is we kind of hit the soft skill development, which is something that's really important uh, with the social entrepreneurship. It's not necessarily about building a business. It's about really taking the guardrails off of what's possible for a student, opening up their minds to things like working in a team, solving problems in their community, learning how to, you know, come up with solutions to things that they find are issues and the things that are important to them. We do like things like reflection so that the students can find their voices as they're writing their college essays and, you know, understanding the things that they have to do to get prepared so that they can, you know, go into the community college. Or even if college is not for them, some workforce stuff. So it's, it's really hitting all of those kind of areas where sometimes the student doesn't necessarily have specific instruction on how to make those kind of decisions.
Also, um, is it possible if you'll be able to do a presentation for us so we can get a?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, definitely. One hundred percent. Definitely.
And what Mr. Davis can do is, you know, uh, Dr. Susky and I uh, went through a presentation with Mr. Davis. If you want to send that to me, I can just forward it to the board. You have that and then if there's any questions, um, I can have Mr. Davis be able to answer those and I can report back on the twenty-third.
Yeah, absolutely. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. So appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. Can you tell me what was the overall graduation rate for this mess?
I won't know the graduation rate for it's almost, uh, for this year won't be a year out. Uh, graduation runs about a year behind. Uh, so when we get the rate now, it'll be for the twenty twenty-one class. Uh, the twenty twenty-two class, you won't get that until next year. Uh, graduation typically runs a year behind.
Do you know uh, the current, the rate for twenty twenty-one?
The twenty-one to twenty-one uh, come out yet, uh, Dr. Sneeve? I don't believe it did.
They run them in for your cohorts typically.
Yeah, and they usually will send that out. I think usually when um, uh, probably by October, November.
Future-ready index comes out.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, hearing none, Madam Secretary. Items A through F on the superintendent's part of the agenda can be moved to uh, consent agenda with the exception of there will be a separate motion for letter E via emergency instructional time template. I'd like that as a separate motion, please. Noted. Thank you. At this time, uh, we are at the last section of the agenda, which is policy updates. I am noting the lateness of the hour and the fact that uh, several are, are fading and one has already left us. So what I would like to do respectfully is instead of engaging in a discussion tonight, I want to leave you with a letter that was presented to me today by Mr. Joe Robinson Jr. I'm going to read it to you. And this will be the springboard for the conversation that will continue at the August twenty-third meeting. And we will have this higher up on the agenda. And as you heard me say, consent agenda means all of the vetting we just did over the three hours, we're not going to have to do that on the twenty-third. These are going to be like one action or one, one approval, one mass approval under each of those offices, which will leave us adequate time then to thoroughly discuss this important topic. So I will leave you with this letter and then I will give you copies before we adjourn. And again, this is written by Mr. Joseph Robinson Jr. If you recall, he and Pastor Earl Harris attended the June sixth school board meeting uh, to discuss their request to have the district perform a disparity study. Even though I currently live in Susquehanna Township, I grew up in Harrisburg, initially living at six thirty-six Riley Street, now the site of the newly erected federal courthouse, and attending both Hamilton and Ben Franklin Elementary Schools. When we moved to six thirty-five Emerald Street, I attended Steel Elementary. I was an honor student and had the privilege of serving as team captain of the nineteen seventy-six Running Cougars basketball team. Upon graduation from Harrisburg High, I attended the University of Virginia and earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in English. I could have settled anywhere, but chose to return to Harrisburg because of the opportunities available to me at that time, right here at home. I didn't want to be a part of the brain drain that results when so many of our best and brightest elect not to return to Harrisburg after earning advanced degrees. I want future Harrisburg graduates to have the same, if not more, opportunities than I had forty-two years ago when I returned from college. Therefore, we urge the school board to consider conducting a district-wide disparity study. The study and implementation of the recommendations will provide a path forward to economic opportunity for parents and future graduates of the district. If we ensure there is the fair climate for everyone to benefit, it means those elementary-age children coming through Harrisburg High School will graduate and find a community that is able to provide them opportunity to grow and thrive right here at home. We need their youth, their brains, and their charisma. But unless we create an atmosphere in which they can excel and prosper, we will lose them to larger metropolitan areas and hinder our own progress. I know the board, receiver Susky, and superintendent Turman intuitively want to level the field for everyone. But because of the nineteen eighty-nine City of Richmond versus J A Grosen case, Grosen Company case, the US Supreme Court has essentially said good intentions alone are insufficient if you cannot document and identify past inequitable treatment. This study will provide the board the legal standing for all future remediation that ensures opportunity for everyone. We are fortunate to live in this unprecedented time when the opportunity to do better is not hindered by lack of resources. With the passage of the ARPA and other level-up funding in the governor's budget, the relatively modest sum of money to conduct this study will yield an inestimable, inestimable return on investment in perpetu- in perpetuity long after you and I have vacated the scene. This is a legacy-sustaining opportunity that may not come our way again for another two or three decades. The timing is right, the money is available, the only remaining variable is our collective will. And it is signed by Joseph Robinson Jr. on behalf of himself and, and Pastor Earl Harris, who presented to you on June the sixth. So again, I have copies of this that I will pass out. If each board member can take a copy, so that you have a copy for uh, you to reread on your own. And the, this topic for discussion will be put uh, at top billing for our August twenty-third meeting. So if you have uh, thoughts on this topic, this would be the time on the twenty-third to be able to share their thought, share their thoughts collectively. And also, if we have anyone from the public who chooses to comment during the public comment period, that would also be welcomed on August twenty-third. So that concludes uh, the conversation, the very brief conversation, again, due to the lateness of the hour. And at this time, if there is no further business, anything? I'm sorry, are there extra copies down here? Thank you. Uh, you will notice there is no roundtable during the committee of the whole. There will be roundtable at the August twenty-third business meeting. So again, we thank all of you for your patience and attention. I know that it has been a very long evening. Ms. Robinson, do you have a?
Yes, I, I just wanted to be, to be clear. You said that, that I just wanted to acknowledge that F me is, is here. And I wasn't sure if that was something that, since this is our first um, meeting, committee meeting of the whole. If you guys are here because there was something that you needed to say to us, or if you just being represented, or if this was something that was going to be done at the, the August twenty-third meeting. I just, I'm not, I just wasn't sure what the, this was something that you need, that was going to be.
I'll go out on a limb and our, uh, F me employees can feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. I think they're here tonight as a show of solidarity for the fact that we are still undergoing contract negotiations. Uh, the only thing that I can report out is that we are feeling that we are hopefully very close to reaching a tentative agreement. And our hope is that we will be able to do that in the very near future. My understanding is that today another uh, negotiation session was scheduled for September first. So I believe that is why they're here and I know they had some signs that they were showing. If I am incorrect about that, they didn't ask to speak at public.
Okay, yeah, this I wasn't sure. It wasn't on the.
Totally understand. Okay. Pardon me? Thank you for being here. We see you and we do appreciate what you do, as was the applause earlier for all of the hard work that you have done this summer. Uh, we do support you. Please know that. And there is nothing we want more than to have an agreement reached as well. And we're working on it. So with that said, um, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.